Hello, good evening. Thank you for attending the regular board meeting of the Board of Education for the Ashkosh Area School District. Based upon ongoing health issues involving COVID-19, school board meetings will be held for the public in a virtual environment in the interest of everyone's health and safety at this time. It is our sincere hope to return to in-person meetings with the public present as soon as possible. The Board is using a Zoom format to host its virtual meeting and will be live streaming the public meeting on the Ashkosh Media YouTube channel, which can be found at www.youtube.com/c/ashkoshmedia. Thank you for being here tonight. Are we in compliance in open meeting law, open meeting law notification?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Please call the roll.
Wyman?
Here.
Carolyn?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Carnes?
Here.
Peichel?
Here.
Solaji?
We have a forum.
Wonderful. Dr. Davis, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we are on the approval of the agenda. This is the portion of the agenda where if the Board wishes to modify the order of any items, this would be our chance to make that decision. Is there any suggested modifications of the current agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move forward, no modifications, and move on to Board Administrator Reports. I, the only report that I have as Board President is that Guys and Dolls is opening up tomorrow night at the Grand, and we hope that the Ashkosh community goes out in droves for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So, that's my, the extent of my report. I'm going to hold back on any other things because I will be speaking a little bit more in great detail related to my education convention experience. So, with that, we will move on to the Superintendent's Report, where we have student Board Representatives today.
Sounds great. So, we will get started. Annika, are you set?
I am set. Sorry.
Okay, excellent. No worries. No worries. So, we've got the Ashkosh West update first?
Great. I have the clicker. Thank you so much. All right, so recently, Ashkosh West did Snow Blast, and for those of you who are unfamiliar, it's my favorite tradition at West. Every year, there is a week-long competition where students get into teams of 10, and throughout the week, there are dress-up days, there are different activities. So, for example, I think on the next slide, there's a pyramid building where you have your teams stack up and you get it timed. There's bowling, there's all sorts of really fun activities, there's log saw outside. And then, at the very end of the week, teams get together and they have made a sled. This week, there was a lack of snow on the hill, so it was more very creative types of transportation. We saw wheels, we saw tricycles, we saw bikes with the chains taken off of them. But you roll down the hill and see as far as you can get, and at the end of the week, all the points are tallied up and we have our winners. But it's just a super fun way to get the student body at West activated and excited about the community that they're in. We actually had more participation than ever this year. We had 630 students participate, which was, which is more than a third, almost half of our student bodies, so it was very exciting. We also recently hosted the Adapted Sports League Floor Hockey Game. We hosted Ashkosh North at West. It was, it was such a great game, it was so fun to watch. We had our pep band show up, we had hundreds of spectators, which was fantastic. We had all sorts of sports teams and parents and fans show up. We got to blow up the big shoot and have all our kids run out and have them announce, and we had Wiley show up, our dance team, so it was just, it was a great night, and we want to thank everybody who came out to watch the Adaptive Sports League. Also recently in sports news, so Ashlyn Groda, she was the first woman ever from Ashkosh West to qualify for Girl State for Wrestling. So, huge congrats to Ashlyn, it was a really big moment for our school and our wrestling program. Another huge congratulations goes to Kendall Larson. She is a sophomore at West, and she made the All-State Dance Team, so huge congrats to her as well. In other news, our boys, our boys' bowling team made it to state, which is super exciting. Our swim team and our wrestling teams are also wrapping up their season, so we wish them the best. And in other news, so we have, we're having a series of band concerts. At Ashkosh West, there are actually four bands, and we're really lucky to have a band program that that's, that's that big, and it's such a great program. But we had two last night for our younger bands, and we'll have our two older bands perform tomorrow night. So, we invite everybody to come out. It's at Alberta Kimball at 7:30 for some great music. We also had, we recently, we're super excited to, in the Ashkosh Music Department, to go watch Guys and Dolls this weekend. But last weekend also, we had our musical, which was nine to five, so that was, it was great. I mean, I've been to a lot of West musicals, and I actually think this one was the best I've ever seen. So, a huge congrats to everybody who was in the cast and the pit and everybody who was able to make that happen, just a huge effort and hugely appreciated. Marcus Miller, who is on our Forensics Team, recently won a meet at Appleton East, so congratulations to him. And then, our Mock Trial Team is going to be competing in regionals this weekend, so good luck to them. And that's all I've got for tonight.
Great, thank you, Annika. And Owen is here to pinch-hit for North High School, so welcome, Owen, and take it away.
All right, so, I'm Owen, I'm a junior student council, and I'm filling in for a lease tonight. So, we're starting our Guys and Dolls musical at North High School. The musical opens tomorrow at 7:00 PM at the Grand Opera House. Come and see the timeless musical comedy about gambling, soul-saving, and most of all, just how far a guy will go for the doll that he loves. Tickets for this fun, high-energy show are available at the Grand Box Office. Merrill yesterday during the day in that Webster, they performed for the students, and the music department has been working on this production since November and can't wait to share it with live audiences. So, North's Black Student Union is hosting a Spirit Week this week in honor of Black History Month. They've also partnered with the TV9 to present Black history during homerooms throughout the month. So, Tyrese Halliburton, North alumni, had a jersey retirement ceremony this January 21st, and he now plays basketball for the Pacers.
As of today, right? Yesterday or today?
So, the Communities Program at North has hosted a hat fair on January 28th, and basically stands were set up around with students, and they had flyers to explain a variety of phone apps to any interested members of the community. And then, Polaris raised over $1,000 for the Fuller Plunge Event and will be sponsoring several jumpers. This event takes place on Saturday, February 12th, and raises money for the Wisconsin Special Olympics. And then, some upcoming events, the Black Student Union is hosting a Black History Month Assembly during the Stewal Day for all students and staff. The Forensics Team is having a tournament on Saturday, February 19th. There's a band concert on February 28th at 7:30 at North. All are attended, invited to attend the free event. And on February 28th through March 3rd, will be North's tradition of Sasquatch Days, including Driosa Paves and other school-wide activities. So, thanks for letting me show up today.
Awesome. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Owen, appreciate that. So, over to the Superintendent's Good News Report. Been another busy couple of weeks since we've progressed through our wintertime. Our second graders at Washington Elementary have been working on persuasive writing. They even wrote letters to the principal sharing ideas of how to make Washington a better place, that a lot of creative ideas to share, including more field trips and my personal favorite, a hot chocolate fountain. So, looking forward to that, that'll be fantastic. Ashkosh West had a snow blast fun, as was stated earlier. They had over 620 students and staff participate, so it was a great, a great event, fun to see the sportsmanship and the school spirit. I think especially coming off of our COVID experiences and being able to just have more activities like this, I think it certainly elevated the energy there. So, congratulations to everyone, everyone involved in that. Lakeside Elementary recently celebrated the World Read Aloud Day with the fun reading focused on classroom challenges and guest readers. I was actually able to go and join in the celebration and just loved being able to be over there and read to our students on that day, so thanks for the gracious welcome. The Communities One Program at Ashkosh North has been learning to understand the complex world of diving into world religions. The students have the opportunity to hear from those who practice various religions in order to gain better understanding of the diverse population in their school and in their community. So, another great work done by our Communities Program. The Boxstein Vulcan, the combination, the combined Lego League team from Carl Traeger, Alps, Perry Tippler, and Oakwood competed at the Wisconsin First Lego League Championship. The team was nominated for the Tournament Champions Award, received the Innovation Salute, Innovative Solution Award, and is the Wisconsin nominee for the Global Innovation Award Competition. The team will be advancing to their International Western Edge Remote Invitational. So, congratulations to everyone involved in that, keep up the great work. As was mentioned before, we had the first-ever WIAS State Girls Individual Wrestling Tournament that was held last month, I believe in lacrosse, and Ashkosh West Senior Ashlyn Groda participated in the event and won two matches and lost two matches. So, just congratulations to Ashlyn on that historic event and everyone that has been involved in that. Carl Traeger Elementary students enjoyed the sights and sounds of Ghana residency from Mr. Mark Powers. Students were able to learn about the history and style of African drumming and participate in school-wide percussion assembly. The residency was made possible by music teacher Mrs. Jennifer Schmidt and funding from Project SOAR and Carl Traeger PSC. So, thanks for all of the donations and the project leadership on that. The Ashkosh Recreation Department's new youth basketball program recently kicked off with 22 teams participating, players from first grade through sixth grade. They practice once a week and play a game on Saturdays at the Oak Lawn Elementary Gym. So, thanks to all the students, parents, and volunteers for making this first season a successful one. Second graders at Emeline Cook celebrated the successful semester of having a cloudy with a chance of meatballs theme day. They read all three books in the series, wrote about what food they would want to see fall from the sky, and watched the movie. So, a lot of fun over at E. Cook. Again, our district is committed to celebrating and embracing the diversity throughout the school year and also proud to celebrate with our Community Black History Month. Throughout February, our students are participating in lessons, activities, and events to celebrate and learn about Black people who have made a significant contributions, who have made significant contributions to our community and to our nation. On the screen, you see just a few examples of resources and things that are happening in our schools. You know, the Ashkosh North, Ashkosh North is excited to host the Black History Month Schoolwide Assembly next week and looking forward to attending, attending that. We have some great events coming up that I wanted to make the public aware of. Tomorrow, we are excited to welcome back Ashkosh North alumni, Mai Li Chang, during the Wave Robotics Community Night. You can come and check out the new Fab Lab at Ashkosh North and learn from this trailblazing scientist and former NASA engineer, so looking forward to that event. Tomorrow and Friday, we're hosting, we're holding community screenings of the documentary film Like. It's all about helping students find balance with social media and supporting their mental health. And lastly, our District-wide Job Fair is happening next week, Tuesday, February 15th, at the Ashkosh Convention Center. Job seekers can meet with HR, HR staff, principals, supervisors, and educators to learn about the open positions as well as, as well as being, give exposure to hiring opportunities for our upcoming school year. More information about all these events are available also on our website. We hope to see the community there. And then, just a list of some of the things that we've been working on in the last couple of weeks. So, been a busy time, but very good, very good. So, that concludes the Superintendent's Report for tonight.
Wonderful, thank you. Next, we move on to District Administrator Supplemental Reports. We will start with our monthly COVID-19 update being provided by Mr. Kemer.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, we finally have some good news on the COVID front. So, cases of COVID-19 are dropping dramatically in our area and across the state, and that's just really reflected in the numbers that I'll be sharing with you tonight. So, the Winnebago County Health Department report that came out this past Thursday covered the weeks, the weeks of January 19th through February 1st. And in that timeline, the case rate for our areas, the geographical boundary of our school district was 2,195. So, still critically high, but that was a 36% drop from the previous two-week period. And I got a sneak peek of the report coming out tomorrow, and there's going to be actually a 47% drop from last week to this week, so the numbers are dropping dramatically. But again, we still remain in the critically higher range for the time being, which is an important factor to consider. As of last week, we had 470 individuals below the age of 18 in our area that had tested positive during that two-week period, and out of those, 470 individuals, 83 were under the age of five, 141 were between the ages of five and nine, 155 were between the ages of 10 and 14, and 91 were between the ages of 15 and 17, just to give you some idea of that breakdown. The district did host another vaccination clinic on Monday, and we had a really nice turnout again, over 150 people came back for either their second dose or first dose vaccination. We have another clinic scheduled for Monday, February 21st at Merrill Middle School, and then a follow-up second-dose clinic on Monday, March 14th, also at Merrill Middle School. So, we hope to see just as good a turnout for that clinic. And then, finally, our COVID dashboard was last updated on February 3rd, which is this past Thursday, will be updated again tomorrow. But as of this past Thursday, we had 71 positive cases in the district, 63 of those were students, eight were staff, and they were part of 19 different schools. And so far this year, we've had 2,449 positive cases throughout the district with 75 of those suspected from school transmission. So, concludes my report.
Any questions for Mr. Kemer?
I would just like to comment, it's great to hear good news on this front.
Yeah, it's great.
I know you're not responsible for all of that, but maybe you are, but at least you're sharing the message, thank you.
I want to see that trend continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, our next report, supplemental report will be provided by Dr. Gunlock on security cameras, the security cameras request, sorry, security camera RFP request for proposal.
It is a mouthful. Yeah, we are pleased to bring forward a, one of the individually considered resolutions that you'll be looking at this evening is to replace our security camera infrastructure. We have approximately 1,200 security cameras in the district. Those were put in largely due to the referendum in 2016, gave us some seed money to start that process. That was about $600,000 back then. We had to add in extra budget money because it was about a $1.4 million project at that time. It is not a $1.4 million project at this time, it is one of those things that have actually gone down, and we are recommending the award-two-camera-corner-connecting point. They have an AVA is the system, and the cost to replace all the cameras and the head-end equipment is just over $775,000. The good news from all of this is by leveraging our technology budget that was supported by the referendum, we're able to continually, technology is the one area where typically you're able to buy more for less over time, and we've been able to find space within our budget to fund this. This was never budgeted for, there was never a sustainable budget put in place for security cameras. But obviously, we've come to rely on it very, very heavily, and it's a very important resource for us. Now, the exciting thing about this particular system is it is cloud-based, it is something that can run on any system. That means that our administrators and deans and other people who are authorized to use the system will be able to use it just about anywhere, anywhere they are, and that's, that's a big help. It also has a very advanced artificial intelligence component to it, and that will allow us to speed things up much quicker. So, if somebody's looking for someone who happens to be wearing a red sweater, the system will find everywhere where somebody's wearing a red sweater. So, it just really helps somebody if you're looking for something in that moment in time, it's very efficient. So, that's just some of the good news, it's a very quick, efficient, and much faster system than we currently have today. The cameras are much nicer, and we're really excited to get that put in, so. Any questions?
Will they be installed at all schools?
Yes, yes. That will include the new schools, we'll be getting them when they are constructed, but we're going to be putting them in at all schools.
I have a question, in terms of when this is approved by the Board, when would you begin installation of the new cameras?
As soon as we get the cameras, we'd start installing them. We, that's why, one of the reasons why we're, we're kind of skipping our normal processes, we'd bring a written report and we'd wait two weeks, and then you would vote on the resolution? We're bringing both of these together at one time to get our order in as quickly as possible. We're confident we'll get those products in second semester and begin the installation probably late spring, early summer, and be completed prior to the first day of school next year. That's the goal.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gunlock, Dr. Gunlock.
All right, next is a budget variance, Esser Funds update to be provided by Mr. Nihans.
Good evening. So, the budget variance report, again, this report deals with our operating funds, so Fund 10 and Fund 27. And much like last month, our revenues are tracking just, just a little bit ahead of schedule, but revenue is usually tracked pretty consistently. Our expenses are still tracking ahead of budget and ahead of the projections. So, last month, there was a 2.5% variance. This month, it did shrink a little bit, we're down to about a 1.5% variance, but that's still on the good side, and dollar-wise, we're still looking at about a $2.4 million projected surplus at this point. So, the budget continues to run the way, the way we would like it to. The Food Service Department is also showing a surplus. So, again, the revenues for the Food Service Department typically lags a month or two, so we, the numbers could potentially be better than what we are seeing right now as we get the claims to continue to go through the system. Newt this month, and moving forward, we will be doing the Esser Fund Report, and right now, the Esser Funds that were detailed in there, that is related to the Esser II Funds. Those are the funds that we are currently allocating. We used all of the Esser I Funds last fiscal year, so currently, we are using the Esser II Funds. We, through January, we've, we've allocated approximately $2.3 million of the $5.9 million allocation that we have right now, which is, which is about where we would expect it, seeing we're just about halfway through the year. So, we do anticipate that we will use that whole $5.9 million allotment this fiscal year, and then that'll free up the Esser III for the next two years after that. One thing to note on the report, this was the first go-around on the report, so in the future, I will be putting more explanations, especially of some of the higher line items in there, just giving a little bit more detail on those, so that's a little bit easier to understand. So, there'll be more, more updates as we go through, not just in the expenses, but a little bit, little bit easier explanations as well. Are there any questions on, on that?
I have a question. I've read some, there's been some conversations in the news that our district has received $20 million of Esser Funds, and can you talk to that a little bit, because that wasn't my understanding?
Sure. So, so that is a fairly common misunderstanding. The district has been allocated just under $21 million, so that's an allocation. We don't receive the money until we actually send in the expenses to the State of Wisconsin DPI. They verify that the expenses qualify under the Esser grant, and then they send us the check as a reimbursement. So, that's, that's why there's, there is a little bit of a difference thereof. We've, we've spent $2.4 million this year, we still have to submit and allocate for the remainder of that $5.9 million. We just didn't get cut a check from the federal government for the different allocations, and it's sitting in our bank account. Does that make sense?
It does, thank you very much.
And the approval, just to add to that, I was on a state call today with our Superintendent's Association, the approval of the Esser III money with the federal government, the application, there's been quite a process to get that approved at the federal level, that the state, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction has had to do a little bit of revising and drafting. So, my understanding is that just got sent in, so that'll be something that we'll hear about, official approval of that. But, so what we have is the estimate, you know, what we expect to get, the final number will come in soon, so.
Also, could you clarify what Esser Funds can be used for?
The first two Esser Funds were a little bit more unrestricted. The intent of those is truly to try to have those be used for recovery of learning loss from COVID, mitigation, especially the Esser I Funds. They were really, for us, it was heavy on mitigation, getting plastic barriers, getting cleaning sanitation supplies, making improvements to your HVAC filtering system so your airflow, air handlers are, are trying to filter out as much of the airborne as you can, those kind of situations. One of the things that is kind of impacting our Esser III and causing the delay in that allocation is the State of Wisconsin took the approach when that got, first got allocated and released was to have school districts really use that as operational and not invest more money into the schools per pupil-wise or aid-wise, and said we had that extra money. So, the federal government and some of the states like, like ours started putting restrictions on. So, for the Esser III Funds, when we, when we get to those, 20% of those funds have to completely be able to be shown to go back to learning loss or mitigation efforts for either the current pandemic or future pandemics. And then, there's a little more restrictions on how you get to use that money. So, you cannot use Esser Funds for salary increases, like our CPI increase we did. We cannot put that on the Esser Funds, the government will deny that all day. So, there are, that is part of the reimbursement process, is they do check your, your expenses and make sure that they do line up with, with the intent of what, what the, what the federal government had for the stimulus.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think it helps clear up some conversation where people have been referring to the Esser Funds basically being blank checks without checks and balances, so I really appreciate that information.
I have a quick question. You mentioned Esser III, and so for the greater good, could you explain the three stages and what that means?
Well, they all end up having their own little acronyms and their own little names, but in essence, the Esser I was the initial relief that we saw two years ago. So, that one, each, each of the funds, you get a two-year period to spend down, so we do. one, each of the funds, you get a two-year period to spend down. So we did get a nice long lead time of being able to access and utilize the funds, which is really nice, especially for our district as we get through the Esser accounts. So currently, this year, we're utilizing Esser 2. That was, as I said, that's about a $5.9 million allocation for us. We're just about halfway through that allocation. And then the Esser 3 funds was the most recent one that President Biden enacted, and that we're getting a little bit more than $13 million for an allocation approximately right now, pending what ended up happening with the state and the federal government as they finalize that negotiation. And we'll have two years from next fiscal year to utilize that one.
Excellent. Thank you. I think it's important to clarify that we are getting this in three different stations. We're not getting a lump sum of Esser Funds. So thank you for explaining that so well.
Yep. Go ahead.
So I can, it's a use it or lose it type of a deal? So you have the allocation, and obviously, have we used up the Esser 1? Like, we're into Esser 2 now. So we're using up as we go and making sure that everything we can get reimbursed for, we are, right? Is that fair to say?
Correct. And it is, being a reimbursement system, it really is a use or lose it, and we will use it. That's, we're not going to turn the stimulus money away.
So I have a couple of questions. Go ahead.
Oh, you can go ahead.
No, I'll use my presidential privilege.
All right. I just had one question. You mentioned that like an Esser 1, you could, districts could spend money on HVAC. My understanding is we didn't put a big investment into that because our buildings were already meeting the standards necessary to mitigate COVID through the HVAC system. Could you speak to that?
We did upgrade the filtering, the filters.
Okay. We upgraded the filters.
So the filters, yes. But the other aspects are, our HVAC systems are all fairly new. So we didn't have anything as far as the systems themselves, other than going to an upgraded filter.
Yeah. I just wanted to reiterate that we are meeting the standard necessary to mitigate COVID.
Correct. Yep.
And I would say that's one thing unique from other districts that I was in, and a lot of our peers that had to make significant investments in their HVAC systems in order to get them up to the standard. And that's a credit to, you know, our facilities, you know, programming and investments that we made historically. We didn't have to make those huge investments to get to that standard. So that's different from a lot of our peers.
Thank you.
So a question I have, and it kind of goes back to a lot of what we've submitted seeing in the news lately, is calls for a district-wide upgrade. I know it was only $21 million that we have in those allocations. How much would a district-wide complete system upgrade cost? Because I'm assuming it'd be a lot more than $21 million.
Of, I'm not sure I understand what you mean by a system upgrade. You mean all-new buildings, all everything?
No, 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 of.
Nice, though.
Of the HVAC?
Yeah, of the HVAC system, sorry.
I don't have that on the top of my head. I know we put many, many millions of dollars upgrading the HVACs and the boiler systems within the last 10 years, but I don't, I would have to dig into that and get back to you on that.
It would likely well exceed $21.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just have a clarification question. Is it not true that one of the most recent upgrades in HVAC was at the rec. department, Jim?
Yes.
Rec. department facility?
Correct. We did, we put a new air handling system in the rec. gym. It was not that air handling system was not performing to code, and we weren't getting the airflow, the circulation we needed to occupy that building. So we made the investment to get that upgraded. We actually have two systems now. We have a system for the offices, and then we also did the system with a new energy efficiency lighting system in the gym.
Great. Thank you. And that's a facility that serves very young children up through the lifespan, correct?
Correct. But that, just to be clear, that was not Esser money that did that.
No, but it was.
That was out of the rec. department budget that they had, and we, so there were two, we did do that, but there are two different funds that were involved in that.
I was just using that as an example.
Yes.
As Dr. Davis had cited, that the district has committed to upgrading the HVAC systems over a period of years, and that was just the most recent one.
Yeah. And to kind of piggyback off of what Dr. Davis was referencing there with our, not only were we in a really good situation with our HVAC systems, technology-wise, we were in outstanding shape comparatively. We bought, we did have to buy some computers, devices for, primarily from kindergarten through third grade. The rest of our district was already one-to-one with the technology to be able to go more easily into a virtual system. Obviously, that wasn't an easy transition, and there were some things that we had to learn through that. But we had the infrastructure to be able to do that without truly tapping in excess of the Esser Funds. There are many districts that ate up their first Esser allocation and were immediately dipping into their second, just to get school going in a virtual manner because they were not as prepared as we were. So there was another kudos to the district for being many, many, many years ahead of our time on the investments in the technology that we've had.
Thank you.
I have a question, but first I want to thank Ms. Larson for her question. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Nihans, my questions, my question, I have two of them, is, one is, can you kind of describe the formula that was used to determine what amount of Esser Funds districts get?
That is strictly based on Title 1. So that's your low-income percentage within your district. It went straight off of the Title 1 allocation process.
So if we.
So the higher, the higher percentage of free and reduced kids, low-income students you have, the higher your allocation was.
Okay. Now, let me just read my second question because I think I can figure out. So, all right, so then, thank you for that. And then comparable to districts around us or to our sizes, how were we allocated dollars and how we spent money? Were we similar? Were we different? Is the, are the numbers all over the board?
Yeah, they're a little bit over the board. Quite honestly, in this area, Manassia probably got quite a sizable chunk in relation. We were pretty high up there as well. Nina, the Ninas, Hortonville's, Kimberley's didn't really get a lot of allocation, partly because their low-income student base is not nearly to the same percentage as what Manassia's or ours would be. Fond du Lac is a little more similar to us. So it really was truly tied to that Title 1 allocation. And I think when the federal government started doing it, that was the easiest way to try to do it and equalize where need would necessarily be, and try to make sure that by doing it this way, their thought process, from what they've kind of communicated, was they didn't want the very property wealthy districts to be able to get the same allocation as some of the rural schools that don't have the same resources, and really be able to try to equalize that out a little bit more.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you for your report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, girl.
All right. Next up, we have a referendum projects update that will be provided by Dr. Gunlock, Mr. Nihans, and Mr. Fox.
So we have gotten, the district has gotten through the initial bidding for the Vell Phillips Middle School and for the second phase of the secure entrance projects. And this year's bidding process is kind of more interesting than last year's. And you can probably, if you've been out in the community and out shopping, you can understand inflation has hit, supply chains have been hard-hit. So when we bid the middle school in November, December, and got those back, we came in about 8% higher than what we were originally budgeted. And we've been working for the last month and a half with Myron and Bray to see where we can make some value engineering, some decisions to bring that down. In that, so the middle school bid, little bit lower than $250 a square foot, which, as I say, was about 8% higher than what we were anticipating. In the month since we opened those bids, new construction right now is going for a little bit more than $600 a square foot. So in a month and a half, the environment has tripled on what these costs were, which brings us to the secure entrance part of. We bid that out and got those bids in a couple weeks ago. And that bid came, those projects, we ended up with only one bidder. The four other contractors that originally were put in and vetted out on the front end, they decided to not put bids in. So we knew from that point, we were going to have to rebid this project. It's board policy on a project this size to have more than one competitive bid. But those, that project came in, those projects came in a little bit more than 200% over what our budget was. So we had some discussions to do and try to figure out how we wanted to proceed as we went to the most recent facilities and finance committee.
Yeah. So I was not at the facility finance committee, but my understanding is that one of the things that we looked at was potentially rebidding those secure entry projects when we would be in a more favorable bid environment. The other thing that we talked about was blunting the cost increase for the middle school so that we would continue to build the middle school that we originally laid out. Obviously, we're going to continue to value engineer what goes into that school to make sure that it's able to be the most cost-effective building we can put up. But we wanted to make sure we weren't cutting out whole sections of that school and drastically altering that school. You know, what it boils down to is we're building a school for 100 years, and we're building one middle school on the north side of town, and we want to make sure it lasts for 100 years, and it meets the needs of this community for 100 years. This inflationary environment, I don't think is going to last for 100 years, but don't quote me on that. My point is that that's something that we can't go back and redo later, you know? So that was one of the thoughts, was to go ahead and continue to value engineer that building, get it started. That's the one that's ready to go. As Mr. Nihans said, we got a relatively favorable bid. It is 8% higher, but it's not the $600 per square foot that some of the other districts are dealing with at this point in time.
Just, I want to ask a quick question because you're using terms that most people probably aren't hearing at all in the community. So I just want you to kind of define what those terms are. You used the term blunting, and then you also used the term value engineer four times in the last three minutes between the both of you. So if you could just take a moment and just define what, how you're using those terms and what you think the community needs to know about them.
So before we started the whole high school process, I was not a big value engineering term user. I didn't even quite know what it was until they started saying, hey, we're value engineering. And I'm like, oh, well, that means you're trying to reduce the budget and still put in something as close as possible to what you originally planned, you know? So that's what value engineering is. What it is, is it's sitting down with not only the architectural firm, but even more importantly, Myron, who's going to give the bid for the project, because they know the costs that they bid the most, and what are some changes you might make to that building that you and I probably wouldn't notice that would begin to reduce some of the costs? You know, one of the examples was, there was a glass rail around the second floor. It was really cool. But that was more expensive than putting in a metal mesh rail around. That's an example of value engineering. It'll still serve the same function. It'll still look very, very appealing, and it won't impact the learner environment, and it won't impact the architectural look and feel of the building. Those are the gold nuggets we're looking for, and we've been looking for for weeks. And every one of those goes into the plus column. That reduces the blunting. So what blunting really means is, okay, if the project is 8% higher, and we need to pull in $4 million, we know we have been authorized $107 million for the referendum, we're probably going to grow the amount that's going, or the recommendation is to grow the amount that's going to the middle school so that we build the same middle school that we, what everybody saw. That's going to increase the budget to the middle school a little bit and reduce the amount of reductions we have to make in that design. I mean, that's ultimately where we're at with this. And then we would, we would then rebid those secure entry projects and do as many of those as we can when the bids come in. Hopefully, next fall, things will have settled down from an inflationary and construction perspective. Part of it is supply chain, but I think even a bigger part of it is the construction firms only have so many people working for them. So if you are saying, we want you to do a construction project, which is, I know, four school secure entries seems big to us, but to them, it's not that big, and we're going to have you do it within a three-month span during the summer, when everybody else wants you, it's really going to drive the cost up. So we're hoping that those environments cool over the course of the next year and allow us to come back at this. Do you have anything that I missed?
So the number that we're talking about now that's being authorized for Vell Phillips Middle School is 112, really?
No, no, no. We cannot go above, 107 is a hard ceiling.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But we're over, so let me ask that question differently. What's the total amount for the middle school with the amount that we're over?
So I think the, was it the original 53? We're basically adding $4 million to what we originally said the middle school would cost.
I believe all in, we're going to be just under $58 million on the middle school, where the projected budget was in the 53, 53.5-ish range.
Here's the other thing that some people might not quite understand or have a question. Some of the questions might be, well, was this a bad time to do this? The answer is no. And here's why it's no. Because, yeah, this went up by $4 million, and we don't like that. And we're going to continue to engineer this down and make the best benefit we can for the community. But we saved how much in interest?
Yeah. By doing the bonds, when we did, especially that front-loading, the $65 million on the first bond issuance, when we saved that $17 million, that's interest money that we saved. It didn't give us any extra flexibility as far as the 107 million we have to spend. But obviously, that's your interest that you're paying off of that 20-year bond. That saved the taxpayers 12 cents on the mill rate, and that goes on for the 20-year life. That wasn't a one-and-done. So we did get a large chunk of interest savings that, and again, if we had waited, we're now, right now, in an environment where it's $600 a square foot, and there are literally middle school projects that bid out a month after ours. They went from a $50 million project, and now they're coming in at $95 million, and they're going, we can't do anything. What is the possibility? So we.
So if you're a taxpayer watching this, and you're saying, okay, $4 million more for the school within the hard cap of the 107, so we didn't raise that at all, but the $17 million in savings goes right to you to drop the mill rate. So instead of the 85 cents that we said it was, it's already down well below what we originally said this project was going to cost. What it's doing is it's saying, okay, district, you're stuck within your 107 million. You have to adjust things to be able to do as much as possible of everything that was said.
So another way of looking at that is that we're still moving forward with Vell Phillips Middle School.
Yes.
But it's really becomes potentially some harder questions or harder things to do for what is potentially going to be the Webster Stanley Elementary School.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So we're, in lack of a better term, kind of kicking it down the road a little bit to kind of figure out.
Yeah. It's a little early on the elementary project. What is, I guess, the way we have talked about it internally is it's really going to look at the secure entry projects a little bit more of what of those projects are we going to be able to do? Again, that elementary school.
Again, that elementary school, that's going to be a 100-year project as well. And we need to make sure we don't short-change ourselves and the community and make a bad decision there that has a long-lasting impact. Where we can kind of hold on these security projects because several of them, the buildings are going to be looked at in Phase Two coming up anyway. So we have some potential, another avenue for these as an already-built-in next phase.
In short, your middle school and your elementary school will long-outlast any of the secure entry projects by decades. So that's why those kind of live in the highest priority lane right now.
And, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And also realizing the secured entries are important for us. And we'll do everything that we can to make sure that we can get as many of those, if not all of those, projects completed. So that's why I think it's really important for us to focus on, you know, delaying that bidding process so we can just get in a better environment. And as we look at, you know, how our budget performs this year, you know, there's a lot of things that we may be able to roll into some of those projects, you know, between the elementary school, the rebidding of those security projects, and our budget as we're working through it to, you know, our goal is to complete everything as we go. We just don't, we just don't know exactly what that's going to look like right now. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we also understand that, and this came across in facilities and finance too, knowing that those security projects are also a high priority. But, you know, so we'll work through it as we go. Again, different economic environments is going to be, you know, very beneficial, which we believe is common.
All right, Dr. Herzog, and then Ms. Carolyn.
I was just going to say that Facilities and Finance had met on these topics, the two that Mr. Nihans is involved in tonight. I have no doubt that we are going to do those secure entrances. We are committed to student safety and health and that of those who are in those buildings as staff members and as visitors. So we will do those projects. And there are a lot of moving parts here. There could be money saved from another part of the referendum that were passed in November of 2020. There could be some budget surplus from the overall Fund X that might be utilized. There could be perhaps dipping into the fund balance, although you don't, that's, can't dip too far into that because you have to maintain your bond rating and so on. But there are other ways to find monies to make these happen. But I can only speak for myself, but also as Chair of the Facilities and Finance Committee, we are committed to doing what we said we were going to do in November 2020. When the voters overwhelmingly pass these referendum questions, we will have new entrances, secure entrances in all those buildings that we said we would.
Ms. Carolyn, Mr. Wrighton, and Ms. Salaji after them.
Thank you, Mr. Pechal. I had a question, I lost track of the number. Does this 4.2 million represent 8% increase? Is that what you said? I just want to make sure I had that right.
Yeah, the 8% overage, we were at 4.6 million. So what we're looking at is 4 million would be shifted, and we're going to continue finding that value engineering to make the reductions to get down to the necessary amount.
Right, and so you think that this value, or value engineering can make, get us back on track with the budget, and we won't be over budget? Is that what you're thinking?
Correct. The last time we spoke with Bray, I believe we identified somewhere in the neighborhood of $350,000 of potential reductions as long as we are moving forward with the shift of $4 million that we're pretty confident we're going to get to that.
That's awesome, thank you. You know, when I saw that number and that increase with all that's going on in the world and supply chain, I was surprised it wasn't higher, quite frankly. So I'm glad that we are going to be able to keep it on budget with this value engineering. So we're lucky that we got in when we did, quite frankly, because I think that we would not be able to afford it to build a new school in this climate, so lucked out.
Mr. Wright?
I mean, what we received is a bid of one piece of a $107 million referendum. And what I think the voters should understand is that's a bid. We're not $4.6 million over budget, we haven't done that yet. You know, we're going to value engineer, we're going to find ways to make these great buildings that are going to serve our students for a long period of time. And we're going to go through the process. And we're going to, like Barb said, we're going to secure entrances as well. So this is just the beginning piece of a long process that we'll all work through and we'll put together a really good product for the district.
I have one, well, actually, I want to be respectful to you gentlemen because I just kind of moved on in a bunch of questions, like I feel in the middle of your presentation. So is there more of your presentation that you wanted to provide us?
No, that's about it.
Okay, thank you. So I just kind of rolled right into it without asking. So I guess my next question is more of a community-driven question because I think most of us probably read one news source either yesterday or today that talked about the city getting favorable bids well under their, what they budgeted for, for projects and such like that. And so I want to make, I would like you to make a distinction. Now, honestly, you may not know what those projects are, it was a road project. So different types of materials and everything utilized in that. But I think it's important to talk about the distinction between the types of project, the type of project that we're doing as a district compared to, you know, the types of municipal projects that may be done in our same community that are, you know, that we're also bidding for. So does that make sense?
It does. I don't know that, I don't know what the city's projects are. I mean, a roads project and a building construction projects are clearly different bidders, different industries, different cost structures. I'm sure there's a tremendous number of differences. I'm not a civil engineer, I don't know what goes into a road, but I, after spending the last year looking at what goes into a middle school, I think it's more complex. There's a lot of pieces there, so.
And the only reason I make the distinction is that people are going to talk to us about this. They're going to say, oh, the municipality that the school district in is getting favorable bids, and, but you're saying that you're, you know, getting bids that are going to make this, you know, $4 million more and all this stuff. And so it's, I think it's just being able to make that distinction in our community about the difference of types of projects. I mean, we're building a school, hopefully two schools, you know, with that, you know, $107 million that we want, well, we, you know, we'd say 100 years, but a lot's going to change within that 100 years as well. So, but the reality is, is that there is no, there is no similarity between a road project and the building of a school.
Well, you could just look at our security camera project. That came in very favorably bid and was far less than the first time we put it in. Totally different situation, you know, and just construction is a different industry. You know, I think those are comparing apples and oranges sometimes.
And I think that the next thing to look at it too is that it's completely different markets as well.
Very much so.
You know, I mean, if you talk about the materials market, you know, and such, those are different things. And in my employment that I work in, you know, in the last six months, we've seen, you know, six different numbers of what it's going to cost to build a four-bedroom house, you know. So, and it's just that volatile of a market as well. Dr. Herzog, go ahead.
First of all, I am no expert when it comes to road construction or building construction, so I'll put that disclaimer out right away. However, I did recently talk with one of the NINA's school district board members who noted that there have been increases in the construction of their new school, which she attributed in part, not entirely, but in part to the cost of steel, which as I see in the mainstream news media, is a big component when you're building or you're constructing a new building, which I don't know that, how much steel you use in roads, probably not nearly as much. So I would guess that that's a component. As was explained, that we're talking about different kinds of projects, and thus you need different materials, you've got different supply chain issues. And so I'm sure those are some of the factors that contribute.
I think one of the things that we noticed as we looked at the bids to kind of answer, at least from the school district, new construction as opposed to renovation was drastically different. The renovation projects were much closer, they were still high, but not nearly the amount of variance from that as new construction. New construction's much more heavily reliant on steel and different materials that are just harder. So there was a difference between that within our projects. But otherwise, I wouldn't have anything as far as what the city's doing compared to us as an answer on that.
And I'm not asking you to try to explain what the city does. I'm just, was just seeing if there was the ability to have the conversation of the apples to oranges. I'm going to go with Mr. Carnes and then Ms. Carolyn.
Thank you.
So first off, I appreciate the feedback from the Facilities and Finance Committee and what you guys had gone through at the last meeting. One of the things I'm getting out of tonight's meeting is some of the questions we are asking is because of news stories that came out. A lot of this stuff was discussed at the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting, I would assume. So I think it's fair for the public to understand that sometimes stories are written with not all the information, but that information is available. Our committee meetings are open, they're open to the public, people can come watch them and see them. So some of the stuff we're asking tonight are things many of us already know, but we're asking it for reasons to clarify out there. And so I would be cautious to know, like, if you want to know more, our committee meetings are open. If you want to ask the questions, you can ask the questions. Sometimes the stories that we're reading are not a truth of what is happening. And I appreciate the explanation that you guys are giving tonight to talk through it. I am not a member of that committee, and so listening to it here, but I also wanted, one of my questions was to ask what you guys had discussed and talked about. And it seems like we came to a good understanding of what we are going to do. And from what I'm understanding from you guys, we're going to get creative right now. We're going to make sure that the school keeps going, as is. I'm not going to use the other phrase that's been thrown about. We're going to do what we can, but we had to rebid the security bid anyways. So it's not like we are pushing that off or we are denying security for our students. It was something that we were going to have to do anyways.
Correct.
So there are two different stories running parallel to each other as to how this is happening. And so I think we've gotten a lot of clarification on that tonight, and for that, I appreciate it.
And Mr. Carnes, you just nailed it. I agree with everything you said. I think there were a lot of misperceptions in the media, and I think that this was a great time to clear that up. And I have a great ending for this conversation. We were 1.2 million, I'm not exactly sure, 1 million and change under when we built Oaklawn. So I have faith in our administration to keep us on task and on budget, and because they've done it before, and you will figure it out, and we might even, who knows, right? Oaklawn was over budget at one point and then went down, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other closing comments? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, so tonight, our next section is for other reports. Typically, this is a time where we have opportunities for committee chairs. But tonight, we'll also do, those that attended the WASB Education Convention will have the opportunity to recap on their experience. So I'm not expecting any committee reports, but if anyone had any, okay. So then, I'm not going to call on you to give a report. I'm just going to see who wants to go first. So, so let me do this. Many of us, and even Dr. Davis, Dr. Gunlock, and who else?
I think, I think that might have been him.
Okay, so, and Dr. Herzog, you can inform me if I'm not going to do the right title for the convention because there's a lot of acronyms there that I'm not going to remember. Primarily just because I'm on the school board, and so I'm focusing on the school board's perspective of it. So two weeks ago, several of us, four board members, two staff persons, attended the WASB, the WASDA.
Also known as WASDA.
And WSABO, WASBO.
Very good.
Building, financial, right? Is that?
The school business.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, school business officials. So we spent roughly, I think it was four days in Milwaukee, attending breakout sessions, attending delegate assemblies, attending keynote speakers. No breakfasts or lunches this year, just related to COVID and everything. And then just lots of time in between at the exhibit hall, which is the, you know, a large open room with tons of vendors in it. And making connections, networking with other school board members, other school administrators and other business officials, and vendors that support the day-to-day workings of school districts across the state of Wisconsin. So I thought it would be good for us to, for us to each kind of provide just kind of a recap of what our experience was. So, and I kind of initially told everyone five to 10 minutes. They can take as much time as they want. If they want to take three minutes, they can do, they can take three minutes. So is anyone, does anyone want to go first?
I can, Stephanie's staring at me like I should.
You don't have to.
All right, no, I can. I attended three days of the conference. I was able to go to five breakout sessions, some keynote addresses, and lots of vendor booths. I also took an educational tour of the Discovery Museum, which is right there on Lake Michigan. That is a wonderful opportunity for our students to go have a very hands-on STEM learning field trip. And I do know that some of our students have in the past, so hopefully that will continue. So I want to first talk about a couple of vendor booths I went to. One gave me some new information about our spending, that every year we take $1,500 to $2,000 per pupil out of our Fund X, which is our general fund, and move it to our Fund XXVII, which is our special education fund. And this is actually something that every district in the state does to a degree. We're a little higher than average than other districts. But the reason this happens is because the state is only funding about 28% of Fund XXVII, that's our special education services. And per state constitution, they should be actually funding about 70% of it. So there's a proposal right now to try and raise that state funding to 50%. So I think this is one of the reasons it's important for us to have our legislative committee, for us to go to legislative breakfast so that we can advocate to our state leaders, and also community members can advocate to our state leaders to support that increase so that we can take less money from our general fund and move it towards our special education fund. Another booth I stopped by was the Learning Task Force of Wisconsin. They gave me this book that I will finish reading and then pass along to others in the district. They are committed to helping districts improve their literacy outcomes. I know many of you know I'm a former high school and middle school English teacher. You may not know that I also have a child that has struggled with literacy here in our district. So for me, this is a very personal and passionate issue. I actually was able to attend a breakout session about it. And at that session, I had two big takeaways about how we can improve our literacy scores, or just two big takeaways from that session. The first one was the importance of teaching foundational skills for reading. There's phonemic awareness and phonics, which are actually two separate things, even though they sound the same. There's fluency, vocabulary, comprehension, background knowledge. And I'm sure any of our elementary teachers who are listening are nodding along like, yes, we know we have a lot to help our students understand. So the second big takeaway I had was how important it is for us as board leaders to support our teachers by giving them the right trainings and the right resources so that they can accomplish that long list of tasks that will improve our literacy outcomes in our district. One of the other breakout sessions I attended, I went to two about board and superintendent relationships. One was about developing strong governing teams, where we talked about the soft skills needed for good leadership. The other one, and I gave you each a handout from it last board meeting, was about the superintendent evaluation process. I went to a breakout session about the myths of education, like it's a myth... Like it's a myth that individuals have a learning style. We may have a preference toward visual or oral, but we actually learn through all of the learning styles. Another common myth is that small classrooms yield better results. There's no evidence that actually supports that a classroom of 12 has better outcomes than a classroom of, say, 21. Obviously, we don't, not classes of 40 or 50. But the sweet spot is kind of 21 to 25. And I can say actually from my own experience as a teacher, I absolutely agree with that. Another one was about the benefit of homework, that homework is only beneficial if it's high-quality practice. Does any of us who've played a sport or an instrument know it's not beneficial to practice something that you don't have the right foundational skills at, skills for? I think that covers all the breakout sessions I went to. The one other thing I want to talk about, and I see that Bob has his book too, so maybe he was going to say something about this, but was my favorite keynote address was by a Harvard professor, actually named Brandon Fleming. And he wrote a memoir about his life experience, which is, he shared his life experience with us, and it's just really fascinating. As a middle schooler, he was dealing drugs to make money. And he thought the only way he could make money or get out of this system was to become a professional athlete. So he went to college, but he had an injury while he was on his college basketball team. And he was about to drop out when a professor, actually she caught him plagiarizing, so then he figured he would get kicked out. But she took him into his office and she gave him the tools he needed to turn around his education and really succeed. And those tools were books by W.E. B. DuWes, Frederick Douglass, Maya Angelou, poems by Langston Hughes. And he just talked about the power of seeing that representation, that he finally could see himself doing something other than the two paths he'd been on. And that was just a really powerful moment for me to remind us as board leaders that regardless of a child's socioeconomic status or racial background or home environment, if we find the right tools, we can get them the education that they deserve and that help them fill their full potential. I mean, it's just amazing that as almost a twice, as a college dropout and a child that had the hard life that he did, that he is Harvard professor now. And he actually started a program, this is the last thing I'll share, where he takes students who are from Atlanta, which is where he grew up, who have never been on a debate team and who have the same struggles and challenges that he experienced growing up. And for three years in a row, he took this team and he coached them, and they won an international debate championship, which again, just shows that his story isn't unique, that this has happened for three years in a row for a group of 25 kids in Atlanta. That I just firmly believe that when we give students the right resources and the right tools, they can succeed. So those, those were my notes in the convention.
I'll go next.
Okay.
I would like, I'm piggybacking on Liz's story because that was one of my highlights of the conference as well. And the speaker that she's mentioning, he, when he went to college and the career counselor said, we need to pick a career for you. And he said, what's a career? Well, what do you want to do? And he said, I don't know what I want to do. And what do you want to major in? And he said, he didn't know any of the words. He didn't know what chemistry was. He didn't know what biology was. And finally, they got to English. And he was like, I can speak English. I need to major in English, right? And the, what really hit home with me is he talked about how, you know, he did not see any role models growing up. And so he thought his only options were to be a sports player or a drug dealer. And he, he so powerfully delivered this next statement, and I hope I get it right. He said, if you cannot see it, you cannot be it. Because he had never seen people of color in his world that were teachers or lawyers or doctors. So he honestly believes if you cannot, you cannot be it if you do not see it. And my entire ride home, that's what I just kept going through my head. You cannot be it if you do not see it. And it's very important for us to recognize that. So that was my highlight as well. I also went to a breakout session on virtual meetings. And we will all be happy to know that Robert's, Robert's Rules of Order has put out a new edition about virtual meetings. And we have nine pages of examples and rules to go through. So obviously, we're not, we're not the only school district that's been doing virtual meetings. But they have had, you know, we have to have new rules in place. And they talked a lot about remote participation and that some boards are just not comfortable with closed sessions in the virtual setting. And that's because when you are in a virtual setting, you, and that person, you really don't know what's going on in that person's background, right? Like, is it truly a closed session? Or, you know, we just don't have the capacity to know. So they were, the conversation was kind of focused on that you should lean away from doing closed session virtual meetings. My big aha moment from this was we were talking about public commentary. And he's, the speaker was talking about how, you know, we've all had gone through COVID, and we all have a lot of people that want to come and talk to the board. And the aha moment was, we control the agenda. So when Bob hits the gavel and he asks for agenda changes, if, say, for example, we were making a decision about insurance, we could move the agenda to the public forum until after the board had our discussion about the insurance issue or something. They use that example. And so during the board's discussion, it would probably answer a lot of questions that the speakers would have. And by the time they came up to speak, they, we might have already covered their issue. And so lots of school districts are finding out that moving the public commentary until after the board does their workshop or something leads to, it answers a lot of questions. So I thought that was pretty interesting. I also had the honor of representing our school district at the Wisconsin Delegate Assembly. For those of you who don't know what that is, there are 464 districts in Wisconsin, and each district gets one person to represent them at the delegate assembly. This was usually done by Jim Evans, and I felt really honored to be able to sit in his seat. It, it was a three and a half hour, maybe four, close to four hour meeting. And I lost track of the time because we also had some participants, 100 and something in Zoom. And we kept losing them and having to reboot. And the gentleman behind me said, I feel like I'm watching a show that has too many commercials because we would have to pause every time we lost the Zoom and wait. But I highly encourage any board members to do this at least once, because it was very eye-opening from my perspective to hear what other districts are struggling with or think about things. So, you know, it's not an open conversation. We have, we had a set of 10.
Resolutions?
Thank you. Can't find that word. 10 resolutions to go through. And it's only 10 resolutions. But they really encourage everyone to speak on the resolution and, and give their feedback because you really do only get one chance. This is a one, once a year meeting. And so I thought it was a great experience. And I'm going to share three of the resolutions that we talked about. The one that was really encouraging for me is the funding for children with disabilities. The WASB supports increasing the special education categorical aid reimbursement level to not less than 90% of prior year eligible costs and maintaining funding at not less than this percentage each year thereafter, et cetera. And this, so initially, it had a different percentage. And so whether or not you're going to raise a percentage from 50% to 90%, that was a discussion that we had. And in the end, we ended up going with 90%. Did I get that right, Dr. Herzog?
Okay.
Okay. The other one I wanted to talk about is mental health. So one of the resolutions, 2205, is broadening staff expenditures eligible for state categorical aid for school mental health services. So that is, we support legislation that broadens the scope of DPI-issued pupil services licensed eligible to qualify for state categorical aid for mental health programs to include school social workers, school counselors, school psychologists, and school nurses. And 2206, directly after that resolution, is broadening the scope of mental health services eligible for reimbursement. The WASB supports legislation to broaden the scope of mental health services and reimbursement from the state to include licensed medical health social workers, counselors, health psychologists, and community mental health coordinators. So those are two of the ones that I was really encouraged by. And I, as the legislative committee, will be following up on these resolutions with our legislators. And I know Dr. Herzog is going to speak about this as well, but are you going to announce the?
You can.
Well, Dr. Herzog is now president of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. And so she oversaw the entire delegate assembly and helped walk us through that process. And I was so proud of Barb. And congratulations, she got, when she was announced as the next president of WASB, Barb got a standing ovation. And I was very, very proud of our school board member. So I think that's all I have. I'm going to let Barb talk about, more about some of the resolutions. Okay. And the only other thing in my notes. Oh, yes, one last thing. We were, one of the speakers was talking about civil discourse and that we need to provoke critical thinking and provoke curiosity. And the only way that we are going to, you know, kind of bring people together again, is really learning, learning how to find common ground with each other. And I thought that was a good eye-opening moment, too. So I think that's all I have. Overall, I highly encourage board members to go next year. I always find that week energizing, and I always come back like ready to go and amped up and with all these great ideas. One of the things that I liked at the vendor station, I saw a lens, like it looks like one of those things that you're, you can see far away. But there's two modes to it. You can look at what it looked like 100 years ago in one view, and then you can switch back and look at it from the current view. And it's, so it's like an educational type of thing. And that's definitely not anything the school board would do, but I'm going to pass that information on to maybe the city or something, because I could totally see those at our Riverwalk. So it was pretty cool. Thank you.
Those are, those are cool. You can see those kiosks all over, all over Milwaukee right now, in all different parts of the city of Milwaukee. You can walk up to these kiosks and do that.
And see the history.
Yeah.
It was really cool. So thank you.
Thank you. Barb, I'm going to go next, if you're okay.
I'm fine with that. Thanks.
All right. So, so this was my first education convention that I, that I've attended in my, in my time as a, as a school board member. And so I, I had the unfortunate circumstance of having to drive back and forth every day to be able to be present with some, some home and family stuff. So, and that's, and that's okay. It gave me some extra time in the car to hear, listen to books and listen to the news and, and listen to some great Milwaukee-based radio stations as well. So, so the, I went to, I think, six breakout sessions. I went to several of the exhibitors. I'm only going to focus on two of them. And then I got to experience two of the keynotes as well. So I'm gonna, I very much enjoyed the Brandon Flemings, miseducated the speaker. He provided a great, I think, something that may be representative of a lot of how maybe lower-income communities and students have challenges with, provided a life history that I think a lot of kids from, from poorer areas, poorer inner-city areas that, that can connect with and create a message of positivity that you can work through this. And the one thing that I took from him is that education is empowerment. That was one of the things that he, that he left with, is that our major role as a, as a school board is to empower students. And, and our job is to do that through our policies, through our actions, through advocating for new schools, through budgeting, through all of that, is to find the role of empowerment for students. Because if he didn't, he's lucky that in college, he found empowerment. But our hope is that kids of our district find empowerment, starting the second they walk onto one of our properties. So that was, that was the message that I, that I took from him. I also very much enjoy Black Renaissance authors and poets and such. And so I really connected with his message of Langston Hughes, Malcolm X, W.E. B. DuWes, all of those Black Renaissance writers and thinkers. So I, I just enjoyed his message. The, the other keynote that I really enjoyed, I'm not going to try to pronounce his last name, but his first name is Ravi, and he goes by Ravi. He's a pretty eclectic person. Most people would not realize that they've enjoyed his music for probably much of their, the late 90s. He was part of the band called Hanson. And he was the guitarist. But he, throughout his life, used his education and his life and his connections to create global connections between communities in Iraq to communities in the United States, and connecting them through virtual modes, creating music together. And was very successful at it and built a career, a transitional career of being a musician to becoming a global diplomat, and using that message to enhance education through several levels of just what we visualize education as, the books and everything, but also through the arts, through music and arts and, and meeting kids and adults where they're at. And I, and I think that's, that's the connection between Ravi and Brandon Fleming, is that if we were to join their message, their message is to meet kids where they're at, so that they can succeed as soon as possible. And so that they can learn to overcome the challenges that life gives them and to be prosperous. Because between Ravi and Brandon Fleming, their, 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 their lives are completely different. One person used their privilege as a very connected family to be able to create change and to become a global diplomat, which is great. And then the other learned how to be empowered after several years of being very challenged in his life, to learn how to meet kids where they're at, and to become a Harvard scholar. So he, you know, Brandon Fleming came from a background of destitution. I mean, if you read the book, it shows that his, his life was about survival. So, and so two completely different paths with bringing the same message together of meeting kids where they're at so that they can succeed. I really enjoyed, I really enjoyed it. I really enjoyed the keynotes. So exhibits, I'm only going to focus on kind of two exhibitors. And one, I could not remember the actual name of it, but they provided me a book that called, it's called The Inevitable Solar School. It talks about utilizing solar panels on school properties, on buildings, and utilizing it from a sustainable perspective of having sustainable energy, but also from a profiting perspective as bringing in some, some extra profits to districts, and also sharing energy as well. So there were, they did presentations on solar panels at two different schools. One was in Rice Lake, and one, and the other was in La Crosse. And so there are some examples in Wisconsin where they're utilizing solar panels and, and reaping the benefits of them as well. And so there was, and I can't, and I, I'm so mad because, I'm not mad, but the person who was in part of, who was talking to me about it was from Oshkosh. And so there's an Oshkosh connections to creating sustainable measures with solar panels. So the other is the Literacy Task Force, which I think you may have hit on. They, they were great. Where's my book? Here it is. So I think each of us left with a book, a different book. The book that I was provided was called Conquering Dyslexia. And Dyslexia. And I found it really interesting. It was a great table. They were interactive. They wanted to be very engaged and talk to us about dismissing, not dismissing, eradicating dyslexia or not eradicating, but learning to help kids be where they're at with, with dyslexia and create some stable foundations for learning for, for students. Not just of dyslexia, but of, you know, any of the literacy realm. So that was great. I think we also benefited a little bit from that, too. There's, we, we benefited, we received a raffle from that as well. So, so we'll be able to expand.
Yeah, we were one of the winners. Yeah.
Okay.
So there was a raffle and we were one of the winners of it. And so we're going to be able to, we're going to be provided some resources that we can connect with some teachers and staff about moving forward on literacy in our, in our community, on top of everything else that we're doing. So, so and that just, that just came about in the last couple of days. So, so that was great. Next, I have, I'm probably going to be the one that speaks the longest, because I have materials for everyone. So, and Mr. Meyerson and Ms. Larson, I did not think they have materials made for you, but if you guys want them, I will give you materials. We can make sure that you get something.
That'd be great. I mean, you can, it's good for tonight, but if you want to send me something, I can email.
I, I will send you an email with, I'll make sure that you get a link to every single one of these documents.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Same with you? Okay. And you can share it with whoever you want. So, all right. So my first, I went to six breakouts. I'm not going to go into them at length. But the first one that I went to was on Tuesday afternoon. It was called Navigating Discussions When Stakes Are High. So, and basically what this was is that this was a room of district administrators and school board members. And we basically broke into several different groups throughout the, the three hours that we were together and talked at each other in different ways to see how we would react to each other and respond to each other. And so there was lots of tools that were related to that. There was, and there was actually one really heated discussion that took place between a school board member, the presenters, and a district administrator. It took up a good half an hour of the, of the whole time trying to navigate the nature of that discussion. So, so they did provide a presentation and I'll give that this way. I think one of them might be mine, but if you guys find one in writing, it's, it's mine. And we can send these this way. And then I'm missing some of them. So, you'll have to forgive me. So, and then I don't know where all of the, all the other ones are for this. This one goes along with it. It's a conflict management style survey. And so it talks about, you know, all these different tools and styles of how we communicate and how to navigate them and to address them. So, did you get one of these?
Yeah, we have enough for this side.
Okay. So then, let's go that way.
I'm getting on to the students because I was in this session also. I already have the materials.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, you can have that. So.
I think I have that, too. Please.
So it was, it was, it was really good. This is, this is probably the time that I got to interact the most with other school board members because we got to break into several groups. It was, it was a very interactive presentation. And I really enjoyed it because I like to challenge myself to be able to interact with different schools of thought and how to talk and understand and be respectful of people in that way. So, and this is the presentation of where we need to find common ground. That was, that was the, the major key of being able to move forward. And in today's day and age of school boards and such like that, is that we have to strive to find the common ground in order to be able to move forward for, you know, for the betterment of the work that we do. So my next one is going to be the State Administrators Association, I believe. It's a legislative update. So I'm just going to go that way. And, and this one was an hour of just talking about legislation from one of the, from the state lobbyists for, for this organization. And it went through all of the, all of the, the bills and legislation. Yep. And it kind of talked about which ones the State Administrators Association was favorable for, which ones they weren't favorable for, and kind of talked about why. And then gave an election preview about how the, how the, the state assembly and the state senate are going to change within the next year because they're expecting several retirements and how the campaign season is just starting to, to heat up. So, all right. So, again, here's just some information on solar panels on schools. All right. So, but I kind of focused on ways that our board could improve. And so that was my mindset going, when I, when I was looking for breakout sessions. And so the next one that I went to, and I don't have any, I don't have a handout for it, was called Ensuring Your Board's Alignment: What Is Your Deliberate Effort? And so it, it kind of talks about the two, this one and the next one that I'm going to talk about, kind of talk about ways that the board should enter into transformation processes that transforms how the board views the public and how the public views the board. And so it talks about each board member taking up assignments and going and becoming members of PTOs, of business organizations, and doing, as a deliberate effort of being a board member, connecting with those entities, and then building a community around that. And so I am, I did reach out to the presenters on that to get their information on it. But, but that was, that was the real thing about, you know, and they literally said, "We have to learn to put our politics aside and think about what's best for students and our communities." And so, and so that one was, that one was really good, too. And then the one that I think is really important is getting the whole picture, effective strategies and leveraging community input. This one, I think you guys all like, because it actually involves Dr. Davis. So this was a panel of three different school districts where they engaged, where they talked about how they engaged in strategies to engage their community and to leverage the input that their communities give them. And so each school district had three different unique ways of going about that. And so we're going to lean on Dr. Davis, because he would have been part of this process at this point. And, and, and it was, it was board-driven. So it was, it was, and in the, in the end, it's also about how the board drives that vision and there becomes board expectation, board member expectations, where the board creates goals. Like when we go into our evaluation, I'm going to ask the board to create goals for how we're going to proceed going forward. And, and then utilizing those and then connecting those to what's the best interest for the district and such. And so there are some strategies of transformation, that's what I've been referring to them as, that we can utilize to improve our, our place within the community and to improve our role as board members by learning and being more productive in that, in that role. So, and my last one, this one's my favorite, because it involves students at school board meetings. So, which we have two here. And, and this was, the highlight of this presentation was a student. So there was a student who was virtual at her school. It was, the presentation was led by Mark Hanson, who I think some of us met as he was one of our liaisons in, in looking for our next superintendent, which turned out to be Dr. Davis. So he's a principal at, what is it?
Superintendent in Albrook.
Yes, superintendent, you know, and, yeah, it, yes. So he, there's a process that they utilize to involve a very exciting process of students providing input about how to improve things at the schools. And so they have a year-long process where they meet with students beforehand or at the beginning of the school year. They work with, superintendent works with students to create surveys and questions to ask the student body. And then they bring that information back to the superintendent and the superintendent brings it back to the board to engage on where those types of ideas and things can be implemented. And one of the things that was, at the very end, if you turn the backside, one of the things that was, that was implemented from this experience is the senior privilege option, which if I remember correctly, it allows, oh, I can't remember. But it gives, it gives students some choices on, on, like if they have done all their homework and they're ahead on things, it gives them some choices of things that they can do during school and, and everything. And so I'll get more information on it. But it was, it was very cool to see this systematic step of how they engage students into improving the experience. And this was just at a high school level. And so, so this was, this was very exciting. And honestly, this, and I'm not sure it was her, but the young lady that was there, she literally answered questions for a half hour. She was the star of the meeting. And, and it was, it was great because she had all these great formulated, people gave her great questions. She had all the answers to them. And, you know, so it was, it was a very interactive experience. And the other element of that is that after she was done, because she had to go back and take a test, was, it was an engaging conversation with other board members and administrators in the room that talked about, well, what do you do at board meetings? You know, what do you see from that outcome? You know, what, you know, and so it was just this great experience of hearing what other school boards are doing in regards to engaging students at the board level. So, and they had what we have here, where you give presentations and, and they actively, and this is something that I try to at least acknowledge, but also like to engage, is to provide opportunities for students to be able to ask questions like you did today, acknowledge that you can do that as well, and provide that process as it's, you know, that your insight is just as valuable as our insights. And sometimes many times more, because you guys are stuck with it. You know, you guys are in the schools, doing the stuff, and sometimes we need to hear from students. So, so that's, that's all I have. Did I, did I go over 10 minutes?
Yeah.
So, so actually, I have one more. So, so Dr. Herzog really is, is the person of the hour today, I believe, in the sense that she's a unique person from a school board perspective. She's not just a school board member. She's an engaged member of our, of our community, has always had students at the forefront of what she's done throughout her entire career and what she does as a, as a community member. When you look at the work that you do on SOAR, the work that you do at, at St. Vincent de Paul, it's all about improving lives of families and providing opportunities of engagement and experience. And so I was not surprised when finding out that, that you were to become the next, the next president of WASB. And I don't, when I looked at the, the, when, when they were kind of passing the gavel at the event, I, I thought about it from the perspective is that you're not just a school board member. You have, you know, a lifetime of educational experience behind you, either teaching, being an administrator, as well as being a school board member. So, so I, I believe that you have a wealth of experience that'll allow you the, the great opportunity to lead WASB for the next year. And I feel very happy to be able to be next to you and to be able to serve on the school board with you, knowing that, that this action has provided you that opportunity. So hold on one second. Do you have a question?
Well, I was just going to take a moment to speak highly of Dr. Herzog. So for those of you who don't know, I'm involved in some legislative activism, that kind of stuff. But from the beginning, like that I kind of started a project on civic education, Dr. Herzog reached out to me and invited me to speak at the Rotary. And a lot of these things have, these are the critical connections that I was able to make that now we have a bill on the floor. And a huge part of that is Dr. Herzog believing in me and my work and believing in students. So I really cannot thank her enough for what she's done for me and what she's done for all of the students and what she will continue to do for students.
And I just wanted to add.
Thank you, Annika.
Yeah, very touching.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
Almost speechless here.
And I just wanted to add, I went out of order, so I kind of spilled the beans a little too early. I didn't mean to do that. But Barb is so revered that she had people coming to ask her for selfies. Can I take a selfie with you, Barb? So I, I'm very proud of her and congratulations. I think we should all give round of applause to Barb.
Dr. Herzog, the floor is yours.
Oh, this is a, this is a tough one to follow. I am passionate about public education and I consider it to be a privilege and an honor to be part of this school board. I think it's really important that no matter who you are in the community, you take an active interest in education because it helps determine the quality of life in our community and makes our community a better place for all of us to live, learn, work, and play. So that's what motivates me. Annika, I'm still very touched by your, by your comments. And I know I have another former student sitting at this table and I'm honored to serve with her. WASB is a member-driven organization and I couldn't be part of WASB without being on the school board. And when I was a brand-new school board member, I really didn't know much about WASB. And I was approached by our former superintendent, Mr. Mack, and our school, school board president at that time, Allison Garner. And they said, "We have an opportunity to nominate you to serve as one of the 15 regional directors." And I said, "Well, what do you have to do?" And they say, "You, it's just a regional thing. It's not a big, big thing." Well, I said, "Okay," if they wanted to nominate me. I was honored to do that. Then I got elected. Then I got elected again. And I thought, "I really need to maximize my time at that table." It's 15 school leaders from throughout the state. We're a member-driven organization. We listen to our members. And by the way, if you haven't responded to the WASB survey that was recently put out, please do that, because that's so important to us. As a result of serving on that board, my, my convention experience was very different because one of the, the major things that I was, to be included in was what they called the delegate assembly. Every late summer, early fall, all districts in the state, all 421 are invited to submit a proposal that they want the WASB to focus on in the coming year. And so those are gathered together. And I have the responsibility of chairing three meetings, three Zoom meetings, trying to connect with people, build relationships with people I didn't know from across the state. It was an interesting, it was an interesting opportunity. So as a result of that, one of my major responsibilities was to be at the delegate assembly. And 421 districts are represented, 12 C's, they all have votes, all 15 members of the board have votes. You vote on little clickers. And so that's interesting, especially when you're in a hybrid format. especially when you're in a hybrid format. Our job was to take those proposals, those ideas for resolutions, and to answer three questions. Is it relevant? Should it be discussed by all 421 districts in the state? And is it worthy of debate? We did not discuss the merits of those. It was just those three questions. So I chaired a pre-delegate assembly on Tuesday night, and then we had our final meeting of policy and resolutions that evening, fine-tuned anything. We heard from the parliamentary, parliamentarian. I always enjoy reading and learning more about Robert's rules because there's so much to learn. But I also had a chance to thank the committee members for their work. I did have a chance to attend all of the general sessions. As, as Stephanie previously noted, there were 10 resolutions. It's very interesting in a group that size as compared to a board of seven. And when we're fortunate enough to have two students here, to have nine, and then superintendent, 10 potential people, but that's a finite number. It's very interesting listening to perspectives, as Mr. Pechal pointed out, from around the state, because 400-plus districts, three-quarters of them are considered small or rural. So those of us in the bigger districts are a much smaller number of districts. The, two of the board members, Mrs. Solaji and Mrs. Carlin, have already talked about funding for students with disabilities. But one of the other things we talked about was a, a proposal on, called Advanced Learning. This is to encourage schools throughout the state to identify and address unmet learning needs of students capable of higher levels of achievement and encourage districts to provide a variety of programming opportunities for our students. I often hear that we don't challenge our students enough. Not every student says that, but there are some students and parents who share that, so I was happy to have that. Another one that Mrs. Carlin mentioned was to increase basically reimbursement to districts for people who are providing mental health services, because we all know that's been a big issue, especially these last two years. That would, that would impact our district. One of the, one of the items that took a lot of conversation was the WSB national presence or a national association membership. We all felt it was important, the majority felt it was important to have a national presence to lobby on a federal level and to influence legislation there. But it didn't necessarily have to be limited to the National School Board Association. That's to be determined. So more to come. But the, the board could not make a decision on perhaps changing membership in a national organization without this delegate assembly. So that's why it was so critical that we, we hold that. There were a couple of times where people who took their turns at the microphone or who came on virtually, got into some personal attacks. And it was very interesting to see the dynamics of the group call people out on that and say that that was a point of order and that we wouldn't tolerate that kind of behavior. And so those, those attacks basically went away. I attended a general session on January 20th. Like other board members, I went to see the vendors. Very impressive to see all the new construction materials and options and things that could go into a school. I also spent some time with a very large coach-type bus that has all kinds of STEM experiments for students. You can have this come to your school. And students have about eight stations they can work through. That's something I hope to promote with the SOAR organization. We can have a broad definition of artistry, including scientists. Like others, we all found our way to the Science of Reading booth on Literacy Task Course of Wisconsin. I have the same book that Dr. Davis has, and I've started reading it, but I need to finish that. Also interacted with a, a guest presenter on using humor. We all have had a very stressful time these last two years. So using humor to relate to people, to reframe, to refuel, but to build relationships was, was pretty powerful. And I also had an opportunity to interact with two presenters following their presentation. When, when Mr. Pechal talked about a, a solar energy group being right here in, in Oshkosh, the RITE program, R-I-T-E, residency and teacher education promotes ways to grow our own and to increase the number of teachers in our classrooms. I had the good fortune of introducing Brandon Fleming to the group. And one of the things that impressed me was it's a combination of ability and access that often leads to student success. And some students could be really good at what they want to do in life, but they don't have access. And to me, that was, that was very impressive. The, the, I did attend the final general session with Governor Tony Evers, who came across to us in a virtual format, and Craig Council, the Milwaukee Brewers manager, manager on leadership and motivation, and found both of them to be very enlightening. The, the one small session I attended that probably had the biggest impact on me was to our neighbor, From Our Neighbors to the South, and that's the Fond du Lac School District. It was a program called Wrap, Wrap Around Equity, Arms Around the Community. They focused on engaging the community to transform teaching and learning to create an equitable outcome for every student. So it really tied in with Brandon's message about providing access for students. They also have engaged in the Community Equity Ally Academy, and they have leadership teams, including the student teams, which I thought was fascinating. So I plan to reach out to them and get more information. One of the things I would, would like to do in this year of this presidency is highlight more of our Oshkosh students. Two years ago, we had two students from our high schools who won major art awards. These are juried awards. It's two-dimensional art. This year, there were maybe 30 pieces of artwork from across the state. We have outstanding art teachers in this district, K-12, and we have outstanding student performances as a result. And so I'm going to be reaching out to our art teachers and encouraging them to enter our students' work so that it can be displayed on a statewide level. I'm just so proud of the work that our, our students and our teachers do, and this is a way of giving credit to them. And finally-
Just artwork, music is wonderful.
Well, that's my next one, Mr. Pechal. You took it away from me. That's okay. Similarly, we have had an outstanding music education program in this district for decades. We're known, we've been known for that throughout the state of Wisconsin. Each year, there are at least four groups that are chosen from across the state. They can be vocal, they can be strings, band, to present in front of potentially thousands of people in a general session. And there's no reason why we can't have an Oshkosh group or two up there. So again, I'm going to be reaching out to our music educators. None of this is about me. It's about our students and our staff. And I want to highlight the excellent things that are going on in this school district, especially in the arts. They don't have an athletic piece there, or I'd be promoting that. But if we could do that, I would really, really be happy for our students for that opportunity. So it's an honor and a privilege to serve on this board, and I look forward to continuing to promote, promote public education among all the, the districts in the state. So if you have any ideas as to how I can do that better, I'm certainly open to ideas. So thank you all very much for your kind words tonight.
They're well deserved.
Thank you.
What I would say is that all of you have access to the WASB portal, where all of the materials that were presented, if they, if they made handouts or gave out stuff, all the materials are there. And generally, if you go to the WASB.org website, W A S B dot org website, you put in your school board email address. You should have already been assigned access to the portal as a, as a member. And so you put in your email and you put in your, your password and you can navigate all of that stuff. And that's, that's available to all members of WSB. So, so even though you, those of you that weren't able to go, you still have access to everything that we had access to. So-
Excuse me, I would just add, that is not the only time you have an opportunity to learn through WSB. They have podcasts. If you just go to their website, you'll get them. They have ongoing legislative updates. There was one, there was an update that came through today on campaign finance for anyone who's running for the school board. And there is a legis, excuse me, a school law program on February 24th. It's going to be at the Dells. So you can go to the portal and register. If you have problems with that, just let me know. But we're a learning organization as a school district, and it's good for all of us to model learning as members of the board. So thank you very much.
And the one last thing that I would add is that your promotion of arts is wonderful, but there's also opportunities to promote the great works of some of our district administrators, our business officials. So meeting like principals and such like that, too. So, so we have great people who are changing lives of Oshkosh area school district students that we could be trying to showcase ourselves also as well. Cause they, it was several, several principals, a business official, and a district, district administrator also got recognized as well as, I think that's it. So, so there's opportunities around to promote the Oshkosh area school district. Is there any questions? All right. Thank you all for that. So, all right. Next up, we have, what time is it? We're at two hours. Does anyone need a quick recess? No? All right. We will move forward. And so next up, we are on non-agenda public, related public forum. So I need to read. All right. Need some glasses. All right, I'm gonna read this. So a total of 45 minutes during the meeting will be allotted for non-agenda-related and agenda-related public forum. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes to speak. When addressing the board, one, please clearly state your name and full address and topic you wish to address. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. Two, please state clearly and concisely the matters of concern. Three, please limit your comments to two minutes. And four, please remember that the use of specific names of district personnel, titles, identifiable descriptions may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 920-424-0160 to have your comments directed to the appropriate administrator. All right. First, we have someone by the name of Krista Lee. Krista Lee, if you are there, please provide your name and address and your comments.
Hello. My name's Krista Lee Brenwood. My address is 1821 Iowa Street, Oshkosh, Wisconsin. Please come by, have a cup of tea. We don't wear masks here. I am talking today. I'm gonna talk to you about August 25th, 2021. What happened at that meeting? Well, just prior to that meeting, the superintendent, who you delegated your responsibilities to, announced that he was going to initiate a mask mandate at the school district. You had a lot of people show up at your meeting, myself included, who attended that meeting, where I didn't get to speak. I stood quietly in the back of the room and didn't get to speak at all. And you guys summarily walked out of the room. As a result of that meeting, the National School Board Association wrote a letter, which, come to find out, was requested by the Biden administration so that they could label parents who show up to school board meetings as domestic terrorists. I take great issue with being attempted to be labeled as a domestic terrorist. I have a problem with that. Also, I have a problem with this school board. As a body, you have done nothing to publicly repudiate their activities. That meeting on August 25th, that people just showed up to because they care about their children and their family members and others in the community, you, you partner with, with everyone in the district. Okay? You're like an abusive boyfriend. I'll, I'll put it that way. You, this board has done nothing to publicly repudiate what the National School Board Association did. And I'm calling upon each board member to publicly repudiate what the National School Board Association did in labeling the parents of this district as domestic terrorists. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Have a good night.
Just a clarification.
Go for it.
Thank you. To my knowledge, the NSBA letter from the then executive, Acting Executive Director did not refer to anyone in Oshkosh or any specific school district.
Okay. All right. Next up, in the waiting room, we have a person by the name of Matt. Hello. Please provide your name and address and your comments. Good evening. We can hear you whenever you're ready.
All right. Are you able to hear?
Yes, we, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Well, my name is Matthew Took. I'm a resident at 1679 Thornton Drive. I wanted to talk today about a few things. The first one is the ASHRI standards. So I was really glad to hear that you guys were finally bringing up ventilation now that we're getting to the end of the pandemic. Ventilation, according to Winnebago County Health Department, is the key mitigation standard. Meeting the ASHRI standards is really nothing exceptional. That's what we meet in non-pandemic times. That's just a baseline for public schools. What is kind of exceptional is we are still using MERV-8 filters instead of MERV-13 at a number of our sites because we have inadequate fan sizes, despite having $21 million in federal money. Instead of filtering our HVAC systems, we filter our children. And the sites that are included in this that are using the MERV-8 yet are West High School, Lakeside, Oakwood, Franklin, Webster, Emmeline Cook, Washington, Merrill, and Reed. We can do a lot better in the area of ventilation, which is the key mitigation for COVID. You know, a lot went on last year and the year before. We watched people run sprints outdoors with masks on. And at the beginning of this year, we were promised data showing stark difference in mask choice versus mask mandatory schools. And I want to see where the data is now. This year, we have thousands of mask optional schools. We have mask optional states. We have mask optional districts nearby. We have mask optional schools within our own district, including Lourdes, Martin Luther, and Valley Christian. Where is the data that you were promised? The reason masks were put on is because we were going to see this stark data that we have not seen. We can no longer use the intellectually lazy excuse that we're simply following CDC guidelines. We did not elect the CDC. We elected you. CDC guidelines are just that, they're guidelines. To put it in perspective, 49,000 children died of all causes in America since the beginning of the pandemic. 339 are COVID-related. More children died of heart disease, cancers, tumors, suicide, homicide, and drowning. Have we stopped serving burgers and fries? What have we done to address suicide? Nothing. We play politics with our children's faces by covering their mouths and noses. How many physically and cognitively disabled young people or, or young were denied mask exemptions?
Please finish up, Mr. Took.
This board should know that information. You guys lack leadership and courage to do what's right for our children. And if you won't stand up, I will. I'll be the voice for the kids. And I've been accused of being a one-issue person, but if you can't breathe well, nothing matters.
Mr. Took, can you hear me?
Practice of forced masks. Practice of forced masking. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Took.
That's it.
All right. All right, that, those were both non-agenda public, related, related public forums. There was no one else there left after we exhausted that waiting room. So, we moved past the agenda-related public forum. Next up, we have workshop. This workshop is on enrollment and facilities plans and boundaries. Phase one review and phase two discussion to be led by Dr. Gunlock.
Okay. Good evening again. Just wanted to go over a few things in terms of enrollment and boundaries. First off, a little quick board policy review. We'll talk a little bit about some administrative guidelines that relate to these because that was requested. We have some data on district enrollment and withdrawal analysis that I think will be, be very interesting. We have an, at least it's interesting to me. And we'll have an open enrollment analysis and an elementary capacity analysis and then obviously open it up for, for a Q and A. Couple of policies that relate to our boundaries. This is policy 0113. The Oshkosh area school district is comprised of the area in description on file with the Board of Education. The summary of that is basically, we have boundaries. It's a pretty simple policy. That one's not, that's relevant, but it doesn't really give us a lot. The one that we really focus in on is policy 5120. And that one spoke, that one is focused on the boundary changes that are, there's some automatic triggers that are in place. We have met none of those triggers at this time. But it's basically over 100% or below 65% capacity for the elementary schools, over 105 or below 80 for the middle schools, and a disparity of 500 or more students between North and West High. So, none of those have, have been met. Obviously, we also are not able to change boundaries except by board vote, simple majority of board vote. Now, we have, we have changed boundaries a few times in the past, and I'll go through those in a moment. It's important also to understand that we do allow parents to attend school other than their home attendance area school. The permission is based on space, and it's also, can be revoked for excessive absences or tardies. The need to transfer students from their home school can also arise, and this is the involuntary transfer situation. This is what occurs when we do not have capacity. Usually, it's impacting an elementary student. It rarely impacts a middle or high school student. So, this is usually an, an elementary situation where we have a class size limit. Let's say an AGR classroom where the class size is 18, and we have a 19th student. In those cases, we either have to add a teacher or we involuntarily displace the student.
What is AGR?
Achievement gap reduction. We used to call that SAGE, which was a class size reduction for certain schools. The district does provide transportation to anybody who does get involuntarily displaced. We also have a system in place where we continually monitor those folks. And the moment that a student moves out of that classroom, which happens very frequently, we call to invite those parents to come back. And we say, there's now room in your home attendance area school. Would you like to come? They are not required to. We will, we will, we commit to them for the entire year that they can stay put, and we will transport them. Oftentimes, they'll come back. I'd say it's about 50/50. Usually, about half the time, the parents say, nope, they've made friends in this room. I want to keep them there for the rest of the year. That's not a problem. We'll invite them again at the end of the year. If we invite them twice and they still want to stay in their non-attendance area school, and we've said there's room at home, you should go home, that, at that point, they become an out-of-attendance-area student just like anybody else. And the same rules and everything apply. So, the administrative guideline has some key points that are important. Obviously, the applications are submitted in writing. We date and timestamp all of those. That's how we tie break. Oftentimes, we need to know that. We do an annual review of all approved requests, and they can be reversed at any time. Usually, it's for attendance. In other words, if the student is not attending their out-of-attendance school, we will often talk with them about, you know, we're going to send you back to your home attendance area that's within walking distance, usually. Approvals are for one year at a time only. You do not have to renew your application with the exception of when you go from elementary to middle or middle to high. Those are the times where we do ask people to reapply. And parents are encouraged with the school to correct any issues. A lot of times, we'll have a, a parent who may have an issue with one of our schools. They will come in and say, I want my child to move. I want him to go to school X. And the first thing we do is have them sit down with the principal. I'd say 85% of the time, that takes care of the problem. And, and things go much better from that point forward. A, a lot of times, these requests are made for childcare reasons. You know, their, their childcare provider may be in a different area, or somebody may be coming to pick up the student. Or they attended a school, let's say Franklin, from kindergarten through, this is now their fifth grade year, and they would just like to finish out even though they moved. Those are things we typically say yes to. We try to say yes to all of them, and we do say yes to the vast majority. In the event we have to do a tiebreaker, this is the document we use. We use the priority placement. The reason we do this is so it's not dependent upon any one staff member. I can hand this form to any parent, and they can, they can do the math, too, and they will make the same decision that we would make. So, first off, a student who lives in the attendance area or requires a building-specific service documented in their IEP, they have first priority. So, a student who lives across the street from Franklin, for example, I'm just using that as an example, they get first priority to attend their home attendance school. That seems to make sense. The second one is a student who is involuntarily displaced and wishes to be brought back to their home school. They get to take priority over a student who wants to out-of-attendance in. It's their home school. They deserve to go there. Number three, a student who is moving into the attendance area within 30 days. Sometimes, we have people who will build a home or buy a home in an area. They show us proof that they're going to be living in that space within 30 days. And yes, we do check. They can move in as a home attendance student. A student who is forced to attend due to lack of space at another site, but now wishes to remain via out-of-attendance even though there's space at their home school? That's, that would be placed next. Inter-district, open enrollment students would have, take priority next. And then, a student who has one or more siblings attending via out-of-attendance. And lastly, a student who does not have a sibling attending. So, if a student came in who was living in the Traeger attendance area, said, I want to attend Shapiro, but they don't have any siblings in there or none of those other conditions apply, they would be allowed to, assuming somebody who is, who is in those conditions is not in line ahead of them. So, that's sort of how we handle out-of-attendance. I have to tell you, in all the, the out-of-attendance discussions and situations we've had over the years, when I sit down and go through this with the parents, nobody has said that's unfair. You know, and everybody kind of gets, oh, yeah, that makes sense. If somebody had a sibling who was attending for some time, they might get in line ahead of me. So, people just want to make sure it's fair and that we date, timestamp everything. So, that is sort of the enrollment process, the boundary redraw process, et cetera. What does our enrollment data show? Well, we did a study in 2018. This study was done before COVID even existed, okay? This study was used prior to us considering the consolidation plan. It was actually a very important part of our consolidation plan. I'm going to share with you some screenshots from that study that came up with some pretty interesting conclusions and worked really well. Now, the, the study actually came from UW-Madison. They, their Applied Populations Studies Group does this work, and they're very, very accurate. This is the age structure from fall 2017. You can see our classes are about 700 to 650 students each. 4K on the bottom, all the way up to 12th grade at the top. We are not that populous now. This was their projecting, projection going forward for kindergarten enrollment trends. And you can see it would get not only below 700, it may even dipped below 600 in our incoming kindergartners. This is another reason why we put together the Facility Advisory Committee, and we realized we need to go down in the quantity of schools. We will be a declining enrollment district. It is, it is, it is a certainty. Here is the area births. This is how they come up with that data. They don't just guess. They do much better statistics than I can do. And they put, they, they analyze all of the area births and, and the demographics of the given region. So, this is the historical projection they had made in 2018. Now, you can see along the bottom, I know it's probably hard to see on screen, but there's sort of a baseline, the five-year trend and two-year trend. The more accurate one is the longer term. So, a five-year trend typically is more accurate than a two-year trend. And you can see they all aim towards the same region, which takes us below 9,000 students. So, right here's the one I think is really, really important. You can see that in 2018, before a single human being in the world was, was infected with COVID, they projected the Oshkosh area school district this year would hover between 9,100 and 9,280. So, if you average those four different numbers, we'd be probably around just under 9,200 students. Here is our enrollment trend today. You can see exactly, we are at 9,208. So, had COVID existed or not existed, we would be at 9,208. So, that, that's, that's, was very, at least from the population study that was done in 2018, they actually predicted we'd probably be a little less than where we are right now. Those are just the numbers. Go ahead.
Were they relating that to lower birthing rates? Or were they estimating that less?
I don't know all the mathematics they use. I know lower birth rates was a big part of it. I know that they did a pretty deep look. I, I didn't put every single chart that was in the, in the study. I can certainly get that to you. But there was a whole bunch of different factors they looked at in terms of baseline data, five-year trend, two-year trend, kindergarten drops, birth rate studies. All of that was, was what they had pulled together for us. Go ahead.
Since, since you asked that, I, it reminds me of a few months back when we had this conversation, we were talking about that. And I feel like Dr. Herzog, you and I were asking that question about, you know, incoming kindergartners versus outgoing senior classes and trying to, try to get a better feel for where this is coming from.
Right.
And so, you, feels like you kind of hit the nail on the head with this information, at least it, it helps give us a, an idea of where this is coming from.
Well, we pulled some, we pulled some information as well. These are, these are the enrollments by school, and this is from 1617 to 2122. And, and don't pay attention too much to the color codes. The Excel just tends to do that. You can see there that, you know, somebody would look at that and go, wow, Jefferson Elementary was up 38%. Anybody want to guess why?
We moved him there.
Yeah, we moved Smith there. You'll also see that Smith dropped like a stone one year. So, you can see in general, though, for the most part, we see a decline across the board. You know, Shapiro, for example, is down 23% from 1617 to 2122. So, these actual numbers at the elementary level are matching up with what we've seen to date. These are the other schools that were there. There's Smith, for example. You can see the year it actually closed. But Webster Stanley Elementary is down 38%. You know, those are pretty substantial drop-offs. It does illustrate the logic behind us consolidating the North Side Middle Schools and the North Side Elementary Schools. This will probably very much work in our favor when we complete those projects. This is the enrollment by grade currently from 1617 to 2122. And you can see once again, no surprise there from the graphs we saw. It is dropping. Pre-K is down 29%, 4K is down 16%. And, you know, those, those are, those are trends that we're going to be living with for some time. This one, this one's probably the one that concerns me. This is the open enrollment history. And as you can see, we started tracking this in 1011, and we made some progress in inroads. We were starting to lose students pretty quick. And for anybody who doesn't know, open enrollment is when a Oshkosh area student, an Oshkosh area school district resident student decides to attend another district. Now, that can be a locally area district, like, let's say, a Winnicottany and Amro Fondleac or Nina, or it can be a long-distance one like Grantsburg, for example, where they may just join their E-Academy. Okay, it could be all of those. I can tell you the majority of the growth in this has been in the virtual area. Okay? You can see that we've moved much lower. Now, for people who don't quite understand what open enrollment is, this means that those, our Oshkosh students go to those schools, and we package up OASD tax dollars and send them with them. So, we, as taxpayers in Oshkosh, pay to have them attend those other school districts. So, just an FYI. So, we worked pretty hard to get those numbers up, and we've seen those numbers dip down the other direction. I think part of that is we do have an E-Academy that is, is using actually the identical system that a lot of those other, other schools are using. It's just, we haven't gotten a lot of traction with that yet. So, that's, that's part of it.
Based on this information, and if I'm correct, this information doesn't include the kids that left to go to private schools, right?
It would not. That is not open enrollment. That would be just a enrollment drop.
So, if you take the 9,200 and add 246 to it that left?
We multiply it, yes.
Plus the kids that left to went to private schools, which is substantial, then, to me, it's not that the kids aren't here to go to OASD. It's that they're choosing, some of them are choosing to go to other places.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
We don't have any private school leaders, so we can't really track that.
Actually, I'll have something in a slide coming up that may get to that a little bit.
Dave?
Yeah.
Hold on one second because I, there are several questions.
Go ahead.
So, on Dr. Herzog and then Ms. Lozier.
I'll pass.
Okay.
Oh, I was just going to know, in addition to private school, I know there's been some exiting for homeschooling, too. And that was, those trends, the growth of private schools and growth of homeschools would happen, were part of, I'm sure, the numbers that came from the Madison study because that's a trend that happens across the state and across the country.
Correct.
That homeschool is growing, and with the voucher system, private school access is growing. This wouldn't include the students that we sent for vouchers?
No, this is not, this is open enrollment. This is not homeschool. This is not moving to private school. These are people who are going to another school district, public school system inside of Wisconsin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. Wyman?
Correct me if I'm wrong. I thought in, I'll say, 18, 17 or 18, we were plus. We had more kids coming in than we were losing.
No. We were, we were, we were closing the gap. We were moving in that direction. So, you'll look, at one point, though, and we pulled this, this data here has been pulled at exactly the same time every year. So, it's apples-to-apples comparison. There was a time around 1617, 1718 where we got as low as minus 46. That, that was a low point. And then, we, we pulled that data like in February when we did one of the, the community briefings. That is as close as we ever got. And then, it turned around and went down the other direction. When we did a study, we did a study right around 1516. The school board at the time had said, hey, why is, why do we have any of this? Can we check and see? Why are people coming to us? Because we, we do have an open enrollment in, a pretty big number. It's just nets, our open enrollment out is much larger. So, we asked, and, and we, we partnered with the university to study those parents and ask them, okay, what, what's going on? Why did you choose Oshkosh? Why did you choose somewhere else? At that time, people who were choosing virtual is because we didn't have one. So, that, that was a big piece. The people who chose other schools or chose us, it was usually related to some form of childcare or access to somebody close by, or they had moved out and they wanted to remain in their, in their district. So, if somebody moved from, let's say, an Amro to an Oshkosh, and they just wanted to finish it out, they would do that via open enrollment. So, that just gives you an idea of how that plays. Now, we did pull all the withdrawals from this year, and we said, well, let's categorize those. And you can see them here. The vast majority are, are coded TC, 67.2%. And those transferred to another Wisconsin school covered by WISE data, known to be continuing. What that means is they went to another, they withdrew to another district. Don't confuse this with the open enrollment slide. This is just withdrawals for any reason. People who did open enrollment are not necessarily considered withdrawals. Then, you see transferred to Wisconsin school not covered by WISE data. That would be 33. That could be private or parochial. That one could be. And then, transfer out of state. We had 52 people leave the state. We had 20 other dropout. We had 65 high school completion. My guess is those are kind of the, the folks who completed high school beyond four years. So-- So they have now withdrawn from the system. And then we had five who were below compulsory age. So they were withdrawn. So that is the withdrawal analysis. This is the capacity inside the elementary classrooms. And what we do is we pull this capacity versus our class size limits. And we, we do our initial staffing around April 15th. And you can see there, we had an average capacity of about 83.4%. Our enrollment was, was pegged at about 3657. This is only elementary, K5, not 4K, isn't even in there. So this is just K5. And then we check it again around mid-August because people move over the summer. And we also remember, we do those out-of-attendance requests. We act on those in April and then we act on them yet again in August. So we do everything in our power to say yes to people. The enrollment dropped, or went up to 3754. And you can see there, we started to get close to 100% capacity in some of our schools. But you can also see other schools got what I call cold. They started to fall well below 80% and, and started, and then by October 5th, you can see that we were back at 3699 and things had balanced out. So when I look at that staffing plan, what it shows me is we, we staffed very cautiously and we left extra spaces for families because we anticipated they would come back after COVID. And, you know, in some ways, we went from 3657 in, in April to 3699 in October. But that still does not blunt the long-term enrollment trends that were predicted back in 2018 and that we're experiencing today. Question?
Yes. What gives me hope on this issue? I'm going to share a story and this story is real. And Liz can verify it. During COVID, my daughter's class, they're now fifth graders at Oakwood. A whole class at Oakwood left due to COVID decision-making. A whole class. They went from three full classes to two and, because of COVID decision-making. But what gives me hope is I think a lot of those kids will come back for high school. So I know the, the data and the statistics says this, that, but there are a lot of kids that we can get back into the school district. So I just wanted to share that as a reference point.
Okay. So how do we deal with this in terms of boundary changes? Okay? Well, we have a history. We did, we did a boundary change in 2013 when we built Oaklawn. And that was probably the biggest one in some time that the board voted on. And that went really, really well. We made some minor adjustments. I don't recall anybody getting very upset about that. Most people were pretty happy. In fact, a lot of people wanted to go to the school and couldn't go to the school. Those were the ones who tended to be a little concerned. When we did those boundaries, we undersized Oaklawn. We intentionally tried to, tried to make Oaklawn's boundary a little smaller than it normally would be, thinking people would move in. And they did, and the school filled up. Okay? In 2016, we did an Ohio Street boundary change that was a minor tweak. It was, it was a road that cut vertically through some yards and such because there used to be a railroad track there. So we, we straightened that out. Minor, I think it impacted a handful of children. And actually, it was requested by the parents that we do it. So they were very happy. 2019, obviously, we did the Smith-Jefferson boundary change. Once again, we were very fortunate that two relatively small boundaries, one of our, one of our newest schools and one of, one of our oldest school were attached. It allowed the board to connect those two. And Jefferson is well under its capacity right now. We were worried it would go over and it did not. In fact, they're doing just fine. I don't know what Jefferson would be doing if Smith's students were not in there because they would be very, very low. And that would be a problem. Coming up, obviously, we're going to have the 2023 boundary change, which I think is going to be the easiest boundary change of all time. We're just combining all the North Side kids, go to that school, done. That's going to be quick. 2024, that one's going to take a little work. That's going to be the new elementary boundary change. We, right now, if it happened today, we could fit all of Washington, Webster and Merrill Elementary students in the new elementary school, if it happened today. My guess is we're probably going to want to do as we did with Oaklawn, tweak the boundary a little bit to give a little bit of capacity for people who may move into the area. You just want, you don't want to build it too tight. And, and we'll be ready to do that. We'll probably start having those conversations a year from now. So. And then obviously, if we were to proceed with a Phase Two, Phase Two would involve some, some significant boundary redrawing around South Park Middle and the West Side Elementary Schools because those would then get upgraded. Schools like Roosevelt would be slated to close. A school like Shapiro would be slated to be repurposed into a 4K center, et cetera. That's all part of the, kind of the Phase Two plan that we originally laid down. So those are the boundary changes and that's the enrollment numbers. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I'll go first.
Go ahead.
You want to go?
No, you're my first.
I spoke first when we talked about the, you know, birthing rate and some of that stuff. I also think as we went on, you were right, Chris, when you talk about, if those 246 kids were there, you know, that would change that. We'd still be down and I think that's important to see. I think there's still some down, but maybe not as down as the projections thought we'd be.
Correct.
Projections also don't take into account a global pandemic and what, what that does.
Correct.
So I think it's important to see that. We also don't know what happens if the COVID guidelines that we put in place in our district go the other way. Do people leave who wanted us to do certain things differently? So I think we, we just, we don't know. And I think, I think I've heard Ms. Wyman say this a lot and I agree with her. It's the marketing plan now to try to bring the kids back. And we're rounding the corner. We see the numbers going down. And I think that a lot of those numbers going down the last couple of years, you know, are, are because of that. And I don't, I don't know that we could have stopped much of that, but I think there's opportunities now that we look forward and we go and we bring them back. Maybe that whole classroom, I'm sure that's, you know, a lot of kids are looking.
Oh, sorry. We don't want to become a withering away district. We want to become a district of growth that allows us to educate kids that want to stay here and live here and, you know.
I guess I, I would say that we had this discussion months ago and I'm glad, very glad that we circled back and we dug into this. We talked about boundaries. Ms. Salaji, we, we had talked about a lot of that, looking at it and what, what we did. So I'm really happy from this presentation that we were able to have and see real numbers and what that looks like and, and what we can do going forward. And I think you're right, Ms. Wyman. It's now, what can we do for Katie and her team? And what can we do to bring that back and, and help out? Because I think that's, that's what we have to focus on now. You know, as we come out of this very soon, I would, I would think. So thank you for that. That really is very helpful.
I'm glad.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I have three things. First, I just wanted to say thank you, especially for including the piece from the policy that shows what percentage schools need to be at. And I was maybe a little surprised, but also glad to see that none of our schools have reached there. There were some that were pretty close. So if we could be notified if they do, you know, like for Shapiro, if they dropped six, five more percent, they would be there.
Correct.
So I just ask that, that we keep watching that. The second thing I was going to ask, you mentioned the Ohio Street boundary change was the result of parents asking for change. So I have had a couple of parents that live at the, basically at the intersection of 21 and Oakwood, where their students are bused across town to Franklin, even though their kids could, you know, get to Oakwood from like a block.
See Oakwood from their.
They can see Oakwood, yes. I joked that they could like throw a football if they were really good from their house to Oakwood. I know Oakwood's more like 90%, but I, when those parents speak to me, what, how would I recommend that they go about organizing like the Ohio Street parents did and getting the change?
Well, the, the Ohio Street one was, was literally four kids. I mean, there, there wasn't, and, and it was, the boundary made no sense at all because it cut across. And it was an old railroad track that was taken out years ago and the boundaries were never switched. So that, that one was kind of a unique circumstance that that boundary made no sense whatsoever. The, the, I think part of it is when we actually get to Phase Two, that will involve a pretty significant boundary adjustment across the board. And it's going to impact all of those schools on that side because we'll be closing some, modernizing others, enhancing some others, and, and it's going to require some, some fairly major changes. I think right now, I probably would not recommend increasing the size of Oakwood's boundaries to the east because you're probably going to get more activity to the west.
Yes.
So that's probably where you're going to, you know, if we really looked at that and said, okay, we're going to go ahead and redesign the boundary around that school, I don't know that we would go that direction and bring kids in from that direction.
So I guess my final question is if it were only a few families that had kids over there. I don't know if you're familiar with that block. It's mostly condominiums that are retired people. So there's basically the people right on 21 and then, is it called Westmore Drive, I think?
Yeah, I think so.
West Haven.
No, West Haven is where all the condominiums are.
I would recommend that.
If it was a small group, I mean, I don't know. I just never know what to tell parents.
A lot of them will do, a lot of them will do the out-of-attendance request. And if there is room, we'll say yes to that and they can actually attend the school that's not their home area. And if, if they're that close, you know, the, the transportation shouldn't be that much of an issue.
Yeah, okay.
That's how, what I would do. You know, and you, you can send them my way too and I can, you know, help them navigate that process if they have any questions. Be happy to do that.
And then my, right? Because I bet the bus picks up the kids on the other side of the street that live like across the street from them. My final comment was just that a couple of weeks ago, there was an article, I believe it was in the Northwestern, it might have been the Post Crescent, but, about growth changes, both growth in the positive and growth in the negative across the 41 corridor from Fond du Lac all the way up to Green Bay. And there was a really interactive map where you could click on each community. And the growth in communities matches the growth in school districts. Communities like Winnicottany have grown significantly and their school district has grown significantly. Communities like Oshkosh and Amro had very minimal growth and their schools actually saw a decline. So I just think it's important to note that what happens in our community at large also impacts our schools. But I think our schools can also impact the growth in our community. And I am really hopeful that as we keep moving forward with our long-range facilities plan and make updates to our facilities, that it will attract the kind of growth that is available in every pocket of our district area.
Absolutely.
So that's the last thing I want to say.
Ms. Wyman has a question.
Echo what Liz said. I, I'm not comfortable saying, well, we lost 360. That's the way it goes and we're not having babies. We better be doing everything we can in this district to get people not only to come back home, but attract them from some of our surrounding areas. We've had some rocky moments and no one can deny that. But we've got a really good thing right now and we need to scream it to the world that we have a really good district. And I, I don't think we're doing enough to, and I know COVID, yeah, yeah, yeah. But once we get beyond that, we've, we've got to do some positive PR about our district and the great things that we're doing.
Couldn't agree more.
If I might speak to that issue. So I, I think something that's, I mean, this is particularly more attractive to high school students. And I think obviously it is important that we have good statistics, not test scores and all that things. But I think where you'll get high school students who want to stay in a district, especially involved high school students, are students where they see good, good sports facilities and good arts programs.
Yeah.
And good music programs because those are the thing, those are the things students really enjoy in schools. And so I, I think that this long-term facilities plan is very important in attracting these students because students need to see that.
Yes.
They say, oh, Kimberly has this, you know what I mean, massive million-dollar like sports complex. Yeah, insanely, you know what I mean? That's something that's going to attract students in that, like, you know what I mean? Like test scores aren't, for a lack of a better word, aren't as sexy. They don't appeal, I think, to students from other districts. Whereas, whereas a new sports, you know, so, so I think, I think we could do some of that. Or bending or like, like the music, like, you know, I think especially for students involved in music and arts like that is, there are huge draws when we, when you have very strong programs in those areas and students are able to, to take a lot of pride in their school and the programs that exist in their school. I think that's, that's very attractive to students.
Thank you.
We are all on board with that. Thank you for sharing.
Yes.
Any other questions? Ms. Herzog and then Ms. Caron.
Anika, I really appreciate your insights on that. That's very important. I think another thing that parent, I hear from parents and, and graduates, how important our AP and our CAP programs are and how that saves students' time in a post-secondary environment. People who can go through college and maybe graduate in three and a half years rather than four or five and a half. And how much, how important that is to our students. It, it fits in with the notion of, of challenging our, our more capable students to do better and to have those opportunities in school. I also applaud when I read the newspapers from the two high schools, the, the number of activities and clubs and groups that are out there for students. I don't know how that impacts students choosing to stay here. But I just think that's so important because our schools are large and we, we have students who have different interests regardless of their backgrounds. And I think it's important that we nurture those, those options. But I totally agree with what Mrs. Wyman has said. I don't think historically this community has done a very good job of marketing itself. There was an opportunity many years ago to have a, a new and bigger and better airport. And that's not taking away from EAA, but the, the commercial flights land, literally landed in, in Appleton. We bemoan the fact we don't have a Kohl's department store. Well, there are probably some reasons for that. Or we don't have a chicken, Kentucky Fried Chicken or whatever people are looking for. But we don't tell the, the many positives about this community and this district. If you go to the Convention and Visitors Bureau site and you see all the things that are going on. I had a chance to talk with State Senator Fine recently and his recent newsletter that highlights things going on in the area, including Oshkosh. There's lots going on here and we need, we need to tell our story, as Mr. Bright was telling a story earlier. We need to get out the word about the many good things going on in this community. And I'm all for the, the current Facilities Advisory Committee 2.0, which is looking into better music and art facilities as well as athletic facilities. So it's good to hear your insight on how that impacts students. So thank you for sharing.
Yeah, and I, I couldn't agree more about AP and extracurriculars because I think students stay when they're engaged. And when, you know what I mean? There's a, if you're involved, like there's the index at Oshkosh West, which so many kids are involved in and there's a community there. And when you're involved in that community, you feel much more engaged than you are in the general Oshkosh West community. And I think that when you're involved in something, you want to stay. You say, okay, like I could go, but I don't want to leave this community that I'm in that's smaller. So I think that is something that focusing on developing smaller communities within our larger high schools and middle schools is very important.
I had a quick comment, but first a question about the Green Meadow population. Is that, are they still being bused to Lakeside? Or, or is that Imperial Hills area now a trigger?
No, I think they're still being bused to Lakeside.
Are they?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I agree with the telling of the stories and I guess maybe, I know I spoke a few times about it, but we have really good staff, teachers, and, and you talk about being engaged in the schools. I was at the 180-degree awards at Oshkosh West the other night and I was told this story. But you could, for those of us that were there, you could feel that the staff that were there cared for those students and it was powerful to feel. And those are the stories that when you're engaged, when you have people who care for you, like there's a lot of stuff we can also do that we all, sitting on this table, agree on, which I very much appreciate, that we are, most of us, all of us are very much on the same direction as the facilities and all the things we can do. But we have staff and stories that we can tell that I could not agree more that we need to get out there to people. Because I, I was so uplifted as an Oshkosh West grad, grew up in this city. My kids are going to Oshkosh West very soon. And I saw the level of compassion and care that those teachers showed. And I know that's all over the district, having been in a couple of them. It's not just, I'm not, sorry, just keep it on the west side right now. I also interacted with people from the north side and different teachers, having been in, in Washington this summer. And you can feel with the summer climb program and the things that were. things that we're doing, that we can get that out there, and that's just a start of what we can do. So it's, I feel good. I feel good seeing some of this, that we have some opportunities.
And so I agree with what everybody said, right? And so I'm bringing, I'm just gonna make a point and bring this back a little bit. We did not have a communications director until like five years ago, and we approved that, right? And since that time, I mean, we didn't have anybody that was responsible for marketing, social media, or anything like that. So Katie has done a good job with branding and getting us a presence out there and everything. But if, if we truly want to be a destination district, we have to invest in a, in a resource that will do that. And Katie is just one person right now. So if we really feel like we need this kind of marketing to get where we want to be, because I agree with all of you, I don't want to see those numbers continue to go down, but we have to put our money where our mouth is. So that's just my observation.
Yeah, and I, I would agree with that. I think that's come up, you know, several times over the last six months, I, I think in the emphasis of that. So at one of our upcoming meetings, we do have Katie coming back, one, to provide a report of, of what her work is, but also to talk about just how we're strategically gonna move forward in that direction, to be able to provide her support, to be able to do that in a way that's really calculated, so we can do an assessment of, like, really, what does that mean? It's one thing just to, you know, say we're gonna go tell stories, you know, the logistics of that and doing that quality work is, is really important. So what I know is that we have, you know, Katie is, is a treasure, like, for her ability to be able to do this work and lead this work. There's some people that can do the communications job, but from a leadership standpoint, I'd have some anxieties about. Katie's it. Like, she, she's really there. So we'll have her back at an upcoming meeting to talk about what our strategy is moving forward, and then what resources we'll be able to provide as we're moving.
Fantastic.
Any more questions for Mr. Gunlock or Dr. Davis? All right, seeing none, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gunlock.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have individually considered resolutions. I will read the resolution and then look for a motion to move. All right. Resolution number one reads, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approves the selection of camera corner connecting point as the vendor for the security camera replacement project as filed with the Secretary of the Board of Education.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Wyman, seconded by Herzog. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carolyn.
Hi.
Herzog.
Hi.
Carnes.
Hi.
Hi.
Salaji.
Hi.
Right. Wyman.
Hi.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have a request for future agenda items. It sounds like the board, board just consensusly asked for one, and Dr. Davis is gonna provide that to us at some point. Any other future, future agenda items? Okay. Moving on to any announcements. Dr. Herzog.
I just want to give a shout-out to Oshkosh North and the Fab Lab for tomorrow night, six to seven PM, celebrating International Day of Women and Girls in Science, which is gonna feature North grad Miley Chang, a former NASA engineer. She's also a member of the Oshkosh North High School Hall of Fame, and she will, if you can't make that one, you can see her on Friday from five to seven-thirty PM in Reeve Union, where she also will be the featured speaker. She's a talented young woman. I know her personally, and so I would encourage you to, to get out and do that. We talk about providing STEM opportunities for our students. We talk about providing role models for students and people who look like them, and this is a great opportunity to not only see that Fab Lab, but to see the success of one of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? All right. All right. We are looking to adjourn to executive session.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
You have to read it first?
After you read it first.
Yeah.
Okay, then I move to waive the reading of the resolution, as it's already been posted.
Second.
All right. Do we have to call a roll?
Yes.
Yes, please call the roll.
Um, I didn't hear who moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was moved by Carnes, seconded by Wright.
Yep.
Is there any discussion?
No.
All right. Please call the roll.
Hi.
Carnes. Hi.
Herschel.
Hi.
Salaji.
Hi.
Wright.
Hi.
Wyman.
Hi.
Carolyn.
Hi.
Are adjourned to executive session?
No.
No?
No, we have to move to adjourn.
No, we're not.